Good morning, everyone. This is the workshop in preparation of our regular meeting this week, which will be June twenty eighth. And it starts out with a resolution of Tony Carrio.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kimpelamesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Franchco.
Bobby.
Commissioner, by the way, we have two things I'd like to address. One, we have Mr. Tom Bellish here from Buckeye Energy, but then immediately after him, we have Ben Turner, who I know told me he has a call at eleven o'clock if he can get moved up on the agenda, his agenda item. But we can start with Tom if that's okay with you.
I think we make Mr. Turner wait it out and draw it every minute.
Yeah.
He loves it. Thank you, Ben. You're okay.
Mr. Bellish.
Yeah, say your name into the microphone, who you're with.
Uh, Tom Bellish, Buckeye Energy Brokers.
You can have a seat there and there's a microphone right here.
Thank you. Um, wanted to give an update on pricing, where things are at, and where the programs that we have so far are where they're at. So you have this, uh, this is a summary of the program. And I just have three copies. We don't go too much. Okay. Um, so that's a summary of where we're at. I know last time, Danny, you asked for a press release, so we did, we did create one, but I never knew, did that go out or not, or?
It must have went out somewhere because we've had multiple people comment over the last year that they signed up, or hey, thanks for giving that number out, or thanks, that there were people that did take our advice and research. And I know there was one person that was paying fourteen something an hour on electric, and afterward, they, uh, they weren't, they were in Viana Township, they weren't in an aggregate area. They were in like a dead zone, but they still weren't able to get on and shop online, based on the information they got from you, and got it for seven. So they didn't get the four, but they didn't have to pay the fourteen they were paying anymore.
Okay.
So it was awful.
And I did have someone call me this morning, too, so that, that worked out. Okay, good. Um, so really, in twenty twenty five, there's one, two, three, three things that need looked at. So one would be the cities on natural gas, the county's own natural gas account, and then the aggregation for electric, and then the county buildings for, for electric. So those, uh, those are what, you know, need to be looked at and renewed. So what I have, what I have here on the, on the second page is the areas of Trumbull County that, that we do not work with. So, um, right now Buckeye Energy works with all, all the townships except for Brook, uh, Brookfield and Liberty, and all the cities except for Warren and Newton Falls. So we work with all, all the other ones. Uh, and then, uh, what we've done in, in coordination with, with the board in the past is we've brought in City of Niles into the natural gas program. Uh, we have that one. And then Village of Lordstown into the natural gas program. And then Weatherfield Township, uh, into the electric program, starting in March. So they haven't started yet, but they, uh, they have their own program and stopped that and wanted to go to the next one. Uh, and then we also had Champion Township join. They had their own program and they wanted to join. So we, we've, uh, had Champion Township join. So what I, what I have, the rest of it, most of the rest of it here is where our, where our pricing for not only Trumbull County, but the other areas of Ohio. So we have Trumbull County at four point three cents per kilowatt hour. That's with Buckeye, of course. And then, uh, our other county we work with in northeast Ohio is Summit County. They're at five point seven seven cents per kilowatt hour. And then the rest of it is examples of, of other places. So we have, um, let's see, five point nine. So that's Brookfield. So Brookfield was in the program, and then the rate, the rate is now five point nine for them, which could have been four, the four point five three, uh, there. Um, Medina County is six point oh five, Licking County is six point four five, uh, City of Toledo, that's six point three. Um, Washington County is, uh, one with CCAO. They're at six point six. Um, then, uh, we have NOPAC, which, you do have a map of their area in northeast Ohio. So there it's about six point five. So and then I have the major cities, Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati. I have, I have those as well, so you can look at those. Um, another CCAO county is seven point two. So that's plus Corrales County. And then, uh, what else do I have? Uh, there's Dayton in there, and Athens, uh, is over ten cents. So, um, you know, we are certified as a, as a natural gas broker for gas and electric, as well, as well as the, as well as the, uh, county is certified, Trumbull County is certified as a, as a aggregator for gas and electric. So, so my concern with, with when CCAO was brought up is that they're not certified, uh, through the PUC. So that was my concern, that you might want to know.
Yeah, yeah, as you know, they did, they did approach and say, hey, we got seventy two counties signed up out of eighty eight, and you're not one of them, uh, but we've got, or Ashville and places around you. We'd like you to look at the plan that we have, and that sparked a meeting with us, with them. And then we know that our contract is inspiring with you in twenty twenty five, but we have to give you, uh, so many months' lead notice if that's something. So once we brought it to our attention that we needed to just look at the options and possibly put out for, um, deciding the prosecutor, we need to advertise this somehow that we're looking at the rates again, just to see.
Right, right.
With you, CCAO, and if there's other, other ones out there, just to make sure we're getting the best we can. Because of course, CCAO says they can do better. You've shown here in some areas, you're doing better in some areas. So we need to look at the whole picture of things when it comes to that point.
Right, right. And, and I would love to work with CCAO, but they have the, a non-compete. So that's what the, the last letter is, they have a non-compete policy. So I can't even, I can't even talk to them. Uh, but I would love to work with them. I, I don't understand why they can't endorse more than one broker. Um, it seems, uh, it seems like they wouldn't cause an issue, uh, but.
Yeah, I was surprised, too. I think it's Palmer Energy is who they deal with, and it, they seem to have a relationship with them, and that's who they use. And why or how, I have no idea.
Yeah, so, um, so you, uh, I was just gonna say, so Danny's idea was to go out and talk to other people, but once you join CCAO, you don't get to talk to anybody else. You give up the right to talk to others going forward. So that's why I thought the board would be concerned about that. Uh, you know, we don't ask for exclusive contracts. Feel free to shop around. But joining CCAO, you would be forced to go with their choice.
On their own.
And, and they don't talk to anybody else. So I just wanted to bring that up, you know, I think.
The other communities in Trumbull County on the map, and there are not many, obviously, you do a lot of them, but, um, is that NOPAC communities, or is that, I know Warren's NOPAC, and then Newton, Newton Falls is NOPAC, I've.
Yeah, and Liberty Township.
Okay.
And then Brookfield is on their own.
Okay.
And all the other ones are with Buckeye. Uh, Cortland, Gerard, Niles, Lordstown.
Well, you know, NOPAC has seen some major increases over the time that we've, um.
Yeah, their, their rates went as high as twelve cents, uh, for kilowatt hour, um, in twenty twenty two.
Because we get calls from people in Warren, and actually, some of our staff is in Warren, and they deal with it.
And Liberty, too. I got a lot of calls from people from Liberty. Um, yeah. So, uh, you know, initially, sometimes you would take a customer, or you don't, not sure where they're at, or have the correct zip code. Not anymore. They're very strict. Uh, you have to be inside the township area to, to join. E- even the, even the, um, county buildings. Uh, we had to do a separate contract for that one account in Cortland that the county has. We had to do a separate, fully separate contract.
And what we, what we pulled from the agenda was the county buildings, correct? It wasn't the entire aggregation program?
It was the aggregation. Yeah, it was the opposite. And so it was the aggregation.
The aggregation program, not county buildings, okay.
It was on the agenda that we were, so that, so that's the next one up. So March twenty twenty five. So that's why I put that one on the agenda first.
Okay.
And then, um.
And then the, the county buildings would come after that?
Yeah, that's, uh, May.
May, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, yes, that, as far as aggregation goes, I don't think CCAO is really in northeast Ohio at all. Maybe far edges or something. It's mainly NOPAC for aggregation. Now, the county buildings, CCAO does have, um, like you, like you mentioned, you mentioned a few counties already. They already have, uh, they do have the county buildings, but not the aggregations. But just wanted to, you know, give the board, uh, um, background on, on pricing.
Saying this right, is there a way we can plug that hole with Brookfield? I know the one caller I dealt with, she lives in Viana Township. She has a.
Yeah, yeah, Viana Township, she's eligible. I would.
She, she has a, across the street from her is Brookfield. She's a Viana Township, um, resident, but she has a Hubbard mailing address. And it's just a weird thing when she called, they said, your address isn't in it. You know, you're.
Maybe they thought she was in Hubbard.
Well, she explained the, the thing, and they said they goes by the zip code and the address of the zip code. And there's, I talked to trustee Beg, and he said down Warner Road, he said there's a gap there, not going down Warner Road, where it's that situation, where some of them are Brookfield, some of them are Howland or Hubbard, some are Viana Town, or, as far as the mailing addresses go, but they're all in Viana Township.
Yeah, I can get, definitely get that corrected. If you want to forward me a name or a number, or some.
I'll do that.
Forward me something that I can, I can certainly work with, uh, Dine Energy now. I almost said first, I almost said Energy Harbor. Uh, it's Dine Energy now. Uh, so to, to get that corrected, absolutely. All right, on that.
Anything else, Tom? Any other updates?
Um, no, that's it. Uh, yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Is CCAO a nonprofit? Are they a nonprofit entity, or?
I don't know.
I just.
Yeah, that's one, one thing. It's, um, you do have CCAO, and that's for the county commissioners. And then there's a CCAO Service Corporation. So that's the, that's a separate business that, uh, serves CCAO itself. There's really two organizations.
So which one is, one is subject to procurement regulation? My curiosity.
CCAO Service Corporation.
But CCAO does endorse different, uh, different companies as well. They've, they've made that very clear. They do. Um, now, now why they won't endorse more than one company, and they have no compete clauses, I don't know why that, that is. But they do, uh, for counties, you know, it's just for, a resource for a county. It's not that you have to go with them, but they do endorse certain entities that they, that they deal with.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. We need to figure something out, so we'll be in touch, Tom. We'll have to discuss this at length. Um, figure out what, how we're into this. Maybe I can meet with you, uh, at another time, Phil, and go over the specifics of what we need to do.
Oh, for Michigan. Thank you.
All right, Ben, I guess we'll, uh, all right, all this is.
Let's get you retirement quicker. Go ahead.
All this is, uh, I believe this is item number forty, for those of you watching at home. And, um, it's just a renewal of our, uh, membership dues for the Ohio Workforce Association. It's, uh, four thousand three hundred fifty dollars, same amount as last year. And that comes out of the we-o allocation.
Okay, thank you.
I have to go.
Have some light vents to check and stuff. Elevator to say.
Okay, anybody else have anything pressing that they need to bring to the top? Okay, we'll just get through it.
Commissioner, we do have at the top of the agenda, a resolution honoring Tony Carrio. He's the CEO of Correction Home, which was once the area agency on aging. Tony has been, was a phenomenal individual, um, in the community. Whenever we needed something with senior levy, he was always there. There was a time when we fell short on a lot of, on a lot of funding, and they were able to pick up the slack on a lot of different things. And, uh, I remember having conversations with him, um, about those things, and his passion for seniors, and his passion for the Mahoning Valley. It's, it's a tragic loss. Uh, and I believe Marnie, his, his wife, will be here to accept, uh, the resolution honoring Tony, who's, um, gone too soon. Quote that, gone too soon.
I, I never met him, as far as I know, but I know the name, and I know the, the reputation. So.
Yes.
Sounds like he will be missed in the community, and, um, that organization does a lot of good, and.
Sure does.
I'm sure it's because of his leadership that they are where they are today.
Yep.
I'll be happy to sign that. Okay. Dispense of the reading in a minute, approve the bills, transfer monies.
We're gonna list. Bob start, because all of those are his.
Uh, all four of these are money transfers.
Who's speaking?
Uh, Bob Meyerano, Controller of Sanitary Engineers. Uh, the first one is fifty thousand dollars. It's closing our state road, stage two project, and returning the money to our, uh, reserve, project reserve fund. The next one is twenty thousand dollars, and that's to transferring money from our reserve fund to our Smith Stewart sewer funds for startup. Uh, the fourteen thousand dollars is startup funds from our reserve fund for our state line sewer project startup. And the seventeen thousand five hundred is from our water district to our blueprint to prosperity water project. We have a negative balance in that fund, and this will remove the negative balance.
Okay. Additional appropriations. Martha Yoder.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Board of Elections is a portion of the copier rebate that needs to be paid to the new vendor in twenty twenty four. The Domestic Relations is a payroll subsidy grant award. EMA is for a PA system. Neocap is jury duty reimbursement. Planning Commission is to set up the Appalachia Digital Equity Grant. I'm gonna skip the sanitary and let Bob get that in a minute. The Sheriff is for upcoming training.
Hey, this is Bob from Sanitary. The one thousand seven hundred and fifty nine dollars and thirty three cents is an increase in advertising to re, rebid our Scoville sewer project. The nine hundred dollars is for the EPA's PPI for our state line sewer project. And the twenty eight hundred dollars is for a PPI for the Smith Stewart sewer project.
Okay, transfer of appropriations.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Board of Health is to increase license insurance and refunds. Common Pleas is an increase in social services. Community Mental Health is an increase in telephone and equipment maintenance. The First Dog Kennel is an increase in telephone expenses. The Second Dog Kennel is additional vehicle maintenance needed. The Third Dog Kennel is additional medical expenses. Eastern Court is additional needed for security. Planning Commission is additional office supplies and materials for the Something Good Initiative Awards. Uh, the Prosecutor is an increase in equipment maintenance. We'll skip the sanitary engineers. Go down to, um, the Sheriff. New Command Center equipment. And Veterans is an increased computer service and software.
And this is Bob from Sanitary. We have an increase in safety supplies for our Metro Sewer Districts for twenty five hundred. We have an increase in Howland Waters' operational supplies at five thousand. We have an increase for our handyman yearly purchase order for Howland Water, um, for a thousand. And, I'm sorry, that was for additional janitorial supplies. For a thousand, the Howland Handyman PO was for nine hundred and fifty three dollars. Which is that not on here? It's not on here. It might be on there. And the seventeen thousand five hundred is to remove the negatives from our blueprint project.
Yeah. Number six, adopt the resolution which will amend the dates for performance end dispersment deadline and accounting deadlines for ARPA agreements. You can form with the newer rules, as well as change to Liberty's agreement on the division of the grant within the project.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. So there have been some deadline changes with final rules, and this extends those deadlines for all of the grants that are listed there to, the performance end date is extended to December first, twenty twenty five. Um, the dispersment deadline is also extended to December first, twenty twenty five. And then their full accounting deadline is December fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, we went back and unless we were absolutely sure that something had been completed, um, we just went back and did all of the subaward grants, grantees, so that we covered everybody and got everybody under that. This was prepared by, um, Attorney Rogers in order to do that. The other part of this is Liberty. Liberty had requested that we change the division of how their money was spent. They were awarded, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, back on April tenth, twenty twenty four. They asked that it, the twenty, or two hundred thousand go to the stormwater management, and that the two hundred and fifty go towards the ball fields, the picnic pavilions, and walking paths instead of the reverse. So, um, Attorney Rogers put all of this into one resolution.
Okay. So this is just housekeeping with their guys?
Absolutely, just getting it so that everybody is, has the appropriate deadlines. We had, the deadlines that were in place before were, um, the subawards.
Oh.
Ours are different. It's, we don't have, um, I get what you're asking. Sorry, it's really, um, so these are just subawards. County projects are different. So the, what we have to correspond to the, our deadlines are, everything has to be encumbered, uh, December first of this year.
December first, okay.
Yeah, all right. Right, I, um, I'm gonna check that, make sure, but yeah, we have to encumber everything before the end of the year, alright? They're, these are sub awards, so-
Okay, alright.
The reason, and everything we give to these folks, so we have to, we have to do all of our awards. That's their reporting for the sub awards.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Right, um-
Alright, uh, Gary Newbrough, sanitary auditor, is there any way we could also get this out to December first of twenty five?
No, because the, this is the guidelines for the sub awards.
Okay, but is it-
And you guys are, counties are not, county projects are not sub awards.
I know, but is there any way we can also get this extended deadline?
Because the federal guidelines are not, these are, the federal guidelines, the county has to encumber, we're, cause we are the-
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
I, I, I would just ask if it was possible, if someone could, okay.
No, I understand, cause it's, no, I don't, and I'll, I'll double check with Attorney Rogers.
Okay.
But what we have to encumber, and that means we have to give all of our sub award, all the awards that we do, we have to do that before the end of the year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I thought it was December thirty first, it's December first.
I think it might be December thirty first for encumbering. But the project still has to, the, the deadline for completion is still the end of next year.
Okay.
Right, it's just getting that money encumbered.
Right, okay, yeah.
Uh, so yes, we, it's housekeeping, it's trying to make things, there, the, the, um, the rules were not clear prior to this, this most recent thing, the end of March, as to what happens, you know, we, we were sort of, the way that Attorney Rogers had written all of the original agreements was that everything had to be done by the end of this year because that's what it looked like. But the sub awards have extra time and as far as, uh, the encumbering. So we, the rule is we have to encumber by the end of this year and then everything has to be completed by the end of next year.
Right, okay.
Um, and then, uh, anything that, that comes back to us next year from these sub awards can be redistributed. That's the exception to the encumbering. So if, say, Liberty comes in and their projects only go four twenty five instead of four fifty, we can award that, we, that can come back to us and we have the freedom to, to encumber it then. But we don't ha, we have to encumber all of the thirty eight million plus by the end of the year.
It was my understanding that the final rule said it was, um, you could go through the end of twenty twenty six. Is that no longer, is that different?
I could be wrong, I, I, I could be wrong, but that, I think that may apply because of that redistribution. But I'll check with, with Attorney Rogers to make sure. We, we've kind of been focusing on getting this because we've had these sub award grantees who are kind of like, well, we know that it's extended. We want our agreements to extend.
Right.
So we've been focusing on that. I will be glad to, to talk to Attorney Rogers and get back with you guys on that, okay?
Okay, alright. It's not that I, I, I plan on getting all of our funds encumbered by, uh, the end of the year, but it would be nice to have that cushion.
Oh, I understand that and I, and I'll make sure that, that that's correct. There's some other things that I need to deal with, with heat and shoot with you separately, but, um, not necessarily in the meeting because we need to, we need to organize some stuff there.
Okay.
But, but we'll, once I get the answers from her and I figure out the heat and shoot stuff, you and I, alright?
Okay, alright. Okay, and number seven, to agree that Baker Dublikar, attorneys at law, may undertake the concurrent representation of Vernon Township and the Board of Tremo County Commissioners in the road improvement contractual matters. Thus waive any objection to conflict of interest with respect to such concurrent representation and execute this waiver.
Um, Martha Yoder, Tremo County Auditor. So the Vernon Township, uh, road project is a little bit different because we're working, they, we kind of worked around some things and worked with the engineer, they worked with the engineer, I should say. And because you guys had already done the, the waiver to have the prosecutor's office represent both, in addition to that, we have to have Baker Dublikar have a waiver for that. That was attached to the, uh, agenda item. It's actually a letter from Baker, Baker Dublikar with places where you guys can execute that waiver. So you guys should have had that attachment as well so you can see, but it was all drawn up. Um, the only thing that I did was the agenda item itself, right?
And we have no other ARPA related stuff on this agenda? Is there a reason she's been with that because we work, we gotta get this stuff spent by the end of the year?
Well, I understand that, and we had approvals, but they came very late and that's part of, uh, I, uh, the, uh, notes for you guys today.
Okay.
Um, and when we get approvals, um, I have to come back to you guys to do, um, to ask for the, so I can request the resolutions and agreements from her.
We'll have some next week then, there are some other things pending.
Yes, oh, absolutely, when we get to that, there's nothing on the agenda though. Those came in very late in the week and with the, the, this meeting in particular being so full and I really, um, will feel more, I feel more comfortable coming to you two before I request that. Because if I'm requesting a resolution, an agreement from her, I'm requesting that she do some work and I feel like I need to have the majority of the board before I request that, right?
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure she wasn't sitting on anything, yeah, we gotta keep this moving along.
So, and I'll, I'll go through that, but she's, we've got a lot going on and I'll, we'll talk when we get to the end, right?
Okay, perfect, thank you. And number eight, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Tremo County Commissioners and David Zofko to perform backup building official duties on behalf of the Building Inspection Department in accordance with requirements of rule forty one oh one, seven dash two, dash oh one, and seven dash three oh one of the administrative code to serve in event of a conflict of interest or the unavailability, unavailability of a building official. The backup building official shall be clearly identified and disclosed in the yearly operational report. Mike Slinski?
Commissioner, Mike Slinski, Tremo County Building Official. Uh, the Tremo County Building Inspection Department is state certified department. As such, we're, we're required to have a, a, a yearly operational report. And in that report, we need to disclose who the backup building official is in case of emergencies. The last twenty years, we've used Thomas Folk. Uh, Doug Kearns was the individual that was state certified. Uh, he's unavailable, uh, he's been unavailable for the last couple of months. We're hoping Doug would pull up, but he, he's not, he's got a health issue. Uh, so we reached out to Mr. Zofko, uh, Tremo County resident, Portland. He actually was the previous building official here before me. He's semi-retired, he's agreed to do it and so he could fill that role for us and, and be inserted in our yearly operation.
How mu, how many instances does that actually happen?
When, uh, when my father was alive was more prevalent because that would be a clear conflict of interest.
Right.
So we don't know when a conflict's gonna occur. I mean, I mean, my brother could come in and want a building permit and then-
Right.
Clearly I couldn't issue a building permit to my brother and then, so then we would hand everything over to, to Doug. Now we, you know, with this goes through, we'd interview him to-
Dave.
To Dave. And we would issue letters to all the inspectors and say there's a conflict. We would disclose the conflict, then we would instruct all the inspectors not to seek my counsel, but to seek counsel from backup building officials.
Do you already have money budgeted for that?
So, so the way we did it with Doug is Doug was also a plans examiner. Mr. Zofko was also a, a state certified plans examiner. So those fees were paid by the applicant when that happened.
We don't have to put this out for bid or anything like that? They could just pick who did it?
Professional services, isn't it?
Yeah, I would say it's professional service.
I mean, I, we don't expect to spend more than seventy five thousand dollars on it.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I, and then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, that was Bill Danzo's voice. Okay.
I, I have a, uh, I have the original memorandum, if you want it. I sent you a PDF copy, that's, those are the orig, original signatures.
Okay, and then the next one, to award the proposal submitted by Clavon Ford Lincoln Warren for the purchase of one twenty twenty four Ford Ranger XL, four by four super crew cab vehicle for the use of Tremo County Building Inspection Department, the amount of thirty eight thousand two hundred. Um, proposals were also solicited from Fred Martin Fairway Ford, Mark Thomas Ford. Mike?
I'm Mike Slinski, Tremo County Builder and First Commissioners. This is a replacement vehicle. This is a new vehicle and, uh, it, it was a really great price. Um, uh, we're lucky to find it, it is local. Um, we reached out to five other vendors, comparable prices. Uh, those were listed in that, in, in the letter that we had sent you. We reached out to Mark Thomas Ford, Fairway Ford, other, other four dealers, you know, to, to gauge that price and it, it's a, it's a really good price.
And you definitely need it, that's why some of the jalopies you guys have been driving in. You, you, this is gonna replace a two thousand and five?
Well, the two thousand and five actually been red tagged by the maintenance department. So, so, so one of our guys has been loaning, uh, uh, we've been on a loaner, Dave, for the last couple of months from maintenance.
That's gonna eliminate that.
That eliminates that, yeah, we need this vehicle for the operation of our car.
Yes.
Absolutely. One I've been talking about for-
Have you sent the quotes over for all those to the commissioners?
Yes, yeah, I sent you, I sent you this letter-
Okay.
That, that summarizes everything. And on, and to support it was all the quotes from all the guys.
Thank you. And that is responsible, I think, too. You went with the Ranger, not with the F one fifty Larry or anything like that, you, for what you do?
And we were looking at, and we were looking at the Maverick, that, we kept, and we kept-
Smaller one, isn't it?
It's a lot smaller than, you know, then we, we found this one and boy, we, we really, I mean, the Maverick was the same price as this one, so-
Yeah.
So we're real happy to find this truck and, and, and put, and work with Clavon and Ford for us so we can get it.
Okay, no problem with that. Said, adopt the resolution for record purposes for the Board of Tremo County Commissioners. Regular weekly meeting scheduled for Wednesday, July tenth, at ten thirty AM, should be held at the Tremo County Fairgrounds, eight ninety nine Everett Hall Road. Special note, uh, the public, and we invite the public to attend the opening ceremony, which will be held on Tuesday at ten AM at the historical stage to the east of the Dairy Parlor. Fairboard invites everyone to come out and enjoy all the activities fair is offered during Fair Week, Tuesday, July ninth through Sunday, July fourteenth. Okay, um, Commissioner, if we're gonna be at the opening ceremony, July tenth at ten AM, we need to adjust our, um, workshop schedule then also, because we'll be at the fair at that time. And then, uh, the next day we'll be at the stage, uh, for the regular meeting.
So this isn't the regular meeting that we're talking about?
Well, we're talking about the regular meeting, but then there's a note that the opening ceremony is Tuesday.
Yes.
And of course, we want to be a part of the opening ceremony also.
Right.
So it just brings the tension that-
Oh, I see what you, with the, uh, workshop, yeah.
Yeah, the-
You can always have the workshop on Monday if you want to.
That, that's up to you, or, or do you want to?
We're doing after that.
Come back after that, uh, and, you know, during the day, that's kind of hard, once we're out there, opening ceremony.
Once you're out there, then it's okay.
I'm, I'm open for whatever you want to do. We have, we have a-
We have some time.
Regular meeting on July third, on a Wednesday, so this is a regular one after that, so there's no gap in between, so we should be in normal business. I would imagine, um, we're off on the third, or, or the, I'm sorry, we're off on the fourth, which is a Thursday. So a lot of people will probably be taking vacations and days for the fifth. So we'd have the fourth, fifth, sixth and seventh with not much coming in. Lisa, you have the deadline for that week on Thursday, which is on the fourth. You have to adjust your deadline also for the things to go on the agenda for the tenth. Do we want to just skip a workshop that day and, and how to keep that agenda light, hopefully, um?
Deadline, I'd like to do Wednesday, the third at four thirty.
Okay.
If we move the workshop to Monday.
Well, that would be for the following meeting.
Oh, I see. Oh, oh, you're talking about the, the fourth of July.
Agenda deadline.
I'm sorry.
Because the fourth is the, is the Thursday, that's the regular deadline, so make it a day early.
Yeah.
Yeah. So make the deadline a day early.
That's fine.
And do, uh, what I'm saying is do we just want to skip the workshop that week and just have the meeting?
I mean, I'm fine with that, that's fine.
I believe, I believe last year you didn't have a workshop.
Yeah, that's fine.
If something comes up pressing between now and then?
That we need to discuss, yeah, I mean, I think. Usually though, when we have the meeting, uh, out at the fair, there's a lot of ceremonial stuff and there's, there's not a lot of, um-
Four H will be involved.
Right.
Right, right.
There's usually not a lot of pressing items, because like you said, too, that after the Fourth of July week, there's not.
Right.
I guess we could play it by ear to see if we, if there's something pressing on the agenda, we can definitely have that Monday to have a workshop.
And we can make that decision too next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, at our meeting or, or at our workshop. But as of right now, it's tendably planned on no workshop at that meeting. And then a reg, we'll be at the fairgrounds for the, for the opening ceremony.
Yeah.
And then, um, Wednesday we'll have a regular meeting at the fairgrounds. Invite the public to, to attend.
Yep.
Um, and we talked with IT as far as making that meeting somewhat public. Is there anything we can do, do Facebook live that meeting or record the meeting and put on YouTube after?
We are, we're, we're gonna record the meeting, for audio. We can get it to work for, I think, in video, we're gonna do that. Right now, we're working with BMA to get the, uh, they're, they're actually purchasing audio equipment for specifically their use, but we're gonna be using it at that meeting.
Martha Yoder, Tremo County Auditor, the, the EMA, I'm tied up-
The twenty five hundred?
Yes, that's what that's for.
Okay, it would be nice, if there is a way we could have a video of that, just to show the four H participants there, to show the kids, to show, and that, that could build followers too, to get involved in county government also, if they're, if you're actually, you know, be on YouTube, be on, be on TV for it. So if there is a way we can come up with some form of videoing it with a microphone, um, and then throwing it on YouTube afterward, maybe it won't be live.
Right.
Uh, but if we can at least have the, have it where people can watch it afterward, then for all the four H kids or whatever they can want, they can see themselves, get their proclamation and give their speeches and that, and that type of stuff would be nice for them.
Yes, and we're, we're gonna do best effort, is, is what I'm gonna promise right now, is gonna do best effort to get everything put in place. But one thing I will address is-
Just something more, township.
Coming out of my department, this is not coming out of the fairgrounds or any, anybody associated out there. We need to, for them to concentrate on their efforts, we will concentrate on the IT efforts.
And while we're on that topic, uh, everything's in line still for cell phone service, um, at the fair?
Correct, we, we have AT and T and Verizon on board. D-Mobile, because they were late to the game and the person pushed us off. They, they're supposed to have a unit out there, but once again, this is gonna be strictly on them. They're, if, if they get it to work, that's fine, if not, we do have AT and T and Verizon on board. They've been working with us from the get-go.
For sure. Go hard. Go hard, Tremo County, it's, their equipment's on site, so we're waiting on the power to be attached to the pole. So Verizon and AT and T is set up and ready to go, just kind of getting them powered to that stuff, so.
Right, on that same note, that diverged just briefly, when I was walking in the building today, I saw one of our detectives outside and he was standing out on the side on Harmon, on the patio there, and he was walking around and I said, hey detective, what's going on? He said, I got damn Verizon, I can't get a call in, in this building. And it, can we make a call somehow to Verizon and see if there's anything we can do to get a booster or something for the county building? I have Verizon myself, my cell phone doesn't work in the office. If we got Sheriff's Department personnel working on things, it, it would be nice if we could get something from Verizon to make the accessibility for the downtown area, at least put it on the map with them that we don't get good service here at the county building to see if there's anything they can do to help out.
We've attempted to do that in the past, or will once again try to do that. Um, it's, it's, with all the carriers' services, they're, we're at the mercy of them, where, where they're willing to boost service in the area, add towers or whatever, we're at their mercy on, so.
But they probably do some demographic study, you know, and based on complaints and based on dead spots, we can-
So once, once again, we'll go ahead and submit that complaint.
That would be good.
Um, Martha Yoder, Tremo County Auditor, I, I would suggest to the individuals who have that problem, contact the carrier. And I'm gonna tell you, I have Verizon and maybe my expectations are low because I have such poor service out in my house, but, but it's, it's fine for me.
It's, it's spotting different areas.
I talk, I don't-
Like in the basement?
I don't have any issue.
In the basement, I have no service on the basement, that's where we have the break room area and it's still, we have problems with internet, we have problems with, with cell phone coverage. Uh, in my office, I had a problem, like you said, the detective was outside, basically walking around like he was looking for Phokeymon. Uh, trying to get a, get a signal. And if there's anything we can do to, just, just make the complaint, that would be great, would be appreciated. Okay, number eleven, approve annual pay- Okay, number eleven, approve an annual payment of twenty-five hundred dollars to Terrible County Family and Children First Council for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, um, July first, twenty twenty-four, to June thirty, twenty twenty-five. No problem with that. Uh, concur with the engineer for special inner supplier fleet permits. Heaven Taller, Emily Tool, Oscar Brugman, Sandy Gravel, Diamond Well Services L L C. Thirteen, right away permits for Lead Core Technical Services, three permits. Concur with Terrible County Engineer to close the falling roadway, Balance Mills, Herner Road in Braceville, between five thirty-four to Herner County Line for Bridge Replacement, that'll be shut down from June twenty-fourth to Friday, July nineteenth. Concur with Terrible County Engineer, special hauling permit for steel coils, Jero Transportation. Sixteen, approve the How Department of Transportation prepared professional service agreements with M S. Consultants to provide professional engineering service for the Tru Genessy Avenue Elm Road Intersection Project located in Howland Township, in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand sixty-one dollars. M S. Consultant was the only consultant to respond to the county's advertisement for letters of interest related to the G R U. Genessy Avenue Elm Road Project. No general revenue funds required, and recommendation of county engineer. Seventeen, award the lowest responsible responsible bid as submitted by Shelley and Sands to the G R U. Larchmont Avenue Project in the amount of one million fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, to be paid by an eighty percent S T. P. G. Grant received through East Gate Regional Council Governments, which will be direct pay with twenty percent local match from the Engineers Highway Fund, and enter into contract with Shelley and Sands for said project. They don't include resurfacing of Larchmont Avenue and Howland, and possess a township just between Warren and Perkins Jones. In addition to bridge repairs, guardrail replacement, and the estimate, engineers estimate was nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Other bids submitted were Carvo, the Shelley Company, and Phillips Paving. For eighteen, award the lowest responsible responsible bid by R T. Vernal Paving and Excavating for the G R U. T H. Twelve Chestnut Ridge Road Project, the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand one thirty-eight, to be paid from Engineers Fund, no county funds required, enter into contract with R T. Vernal Paving and Excavating, this is for resurfacing of Chestnut Ridge Road between U S. Sixty-two and Hubbard Majorie Road in Hubbard Township. The engineers estimate was two oh six, and the other bids were Shelley and Sands, Phillips Paving, and the Shelley Company, and that's a good one there, I've received complaints about that road, so kudos to the engineer for getting that done. Nineteen, to accept the resignation of Michael Del Bono from his position as groundskeeper with Terrible County Maintenance Department effective June seventh, twenty twenty-four. His resignation letter will be recorded on the journal for record purposes. So.
Bill, I know he, um, came over from the dog pound, did he?
Yes, he did.
And how long has he been, did he get, is there an exit interview on that at all?
He's on, yeah, he's on a better job working with the trade, so.
I see.
He's making thirty all the time.
I know he's been with the county for a little while, so.
Yeah, few years, and he was a janitor, and then went to the dog pound, then came back with the groundkeeper.
Okay.
He was at sanitary for a while.
He was at sanitary, too, yeah, he's been kinda bump jumping around, yeah, just curious, thank you.
So that prints us at one groundskeeper as of right now.
Well, with the transfer of Brian Pashati, Bill Hart, Terrible County Maintenance, that still leaves the one open that I was applying for for the third, so we'd have to repost that one.
Okay, that brings us to next one, to authorize the transfer of Brian Pashati from the position of custodian to the position of groundskeeper within maintenance department, Mister Pashati will begin his new duties effective Monday, July eighth. This is in response to authorized job posting from May thirtieth to June seventh. Alright, so six internal unit bids were received, so this fills the one you had open.
Yes.
And now Mister Del Bono's position will be open.
Yes.
And.
We post again.
So we will post again for maintenance, and then we will post again for custodian, though? Okay?
Confucius saying.
And then we have maintenance, we have two maintenance positions open?
Uh.
A maintenance position, then a, this is maintenance supervisor, we post that yet?
No, no, there's only one position.
Yeah. To approve the retirement and present a resolution, Mister William Bim Turner from his position as Executive Director with the Workforce Development Board of Terrible County, will be retiring effective June eight twenty-eighth, with over forty-five years of service. The board and staff would like to pay a fond farewell to Bim and wish him many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation for which he is most deserving. That's, uh, that'll stay in there for a little bit, and we'll have a resolution for that.
Requested one, we have, yes, we have.
Okay, I was just asking him, it was requested, yeah.
Well, he said he'll be here Friday for the meeting, so.
Oh, okay.
He's getting one whether he likes it or not.
Alright.
Number twenty-two, to approve the sale and purchase agreement of the warranty deed from the Western Reserve Port Authority in the amount of fifty-two thousand five forty, which is to be paid from the project fund, number nine eight three oh six oh fifty-six hundred fifty-six ten three five oh five four one, subject to federal and state reimbursement, eighty percent of purchase price will be reimbursed back to the county through federal C M. A. Q. Funds, and allow Denny Malloy, President of Board of Terrible County Commissioners, to sign the submitted sale purchase agreement for said partial for the Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail in Terrible County, Ohio Phase Four, and approve the transfer and appropriation of funds necessary for this person's purchase from one fund to another. Zach?
Yeah, uh, Commissioners, this is, um, one of two purchases.
Name of the bar.
Zach Reed, uh, Director of Terrible County Metro Parks, uh, so Commissioners, this is for Phase Four, this is another right away purchase, uh, this one is, if you remember, the Kimberly Clark property, this is, uh, the part, or the amount that they split off for us, so we're purchasing this through the Port Authority, uh, for the bike trail project.
So is it gonna run along the river behind Kimberly Clark, or?
No, it's on the east side, along, along the railroad and up on the east side of their property.
Okay, and then where's the other twenty percent come from, it says eighty percent?
Oh, that's the local match.
Okay.
From the Commissioner.
Do you know what that amount is, or is that something?
Um, I can figure it out for you really quick, sorry. Ten thousand nine oh eight.
Do we have that amount in there somewhere, or approve that amount, to do the local match?
Well, you're, you're approving the total of the, of Martha, you're a Terrible County Auditor.
Of the fifty.
You're, you're approving the total, and you're saying that eighty percent will come back to us, so you're already approving where the money is coming from.
Right.
And both the next.
And then, the next one is, prove the purchase of standard highway use and reference partial twenty-three C. For Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail in Terrible County from the city of Warren, in the amount of four hundred and sixty dollars, which will be paid from project fund, subject to federal and state reimbursement, eighty percent reimbursed back to county through federal C M. A. Q. Funds, and approve the transfer of funds necessary for said purchase from one fund to another.
So, again, Commissioners, this is just a standard highway use, and then we're purchasing from the city of Warren, um, the twenty percent local is ninety-two dollars.
And the C M. A. Q. Funds, that's definite, that's done, that's per.
Yes, correct, yes, correct, those are federal funds, uh, that we have, uh, gotten, um, many years ago, but, you know, recently, we did.
All of those are journalized as well on the, on the Commissioners' Journal.
Yes, correct.
Now, is there, is there gonna be other needs?
Yes.
Signage, things like that and stuff for it, or?
Oh, for the, these properties?
Yeah.
Uh, not right now, we're gonna be getting to the construction portion, which will be, you know, local match will be required for that as well.
Half a million going to be used for, half a million dollar Clean Ohio Grant.
That's the local match for Phase Four.
Well, this is Phase Four.
Yes, yeah, correct.
Can that be used for this?
No, it won't be used, they won't allow us to use it till construction.
Gotcha, thank you.
Uh, so just to let you guys know, we will have three properties left to acquire, one from Genessy Wyoming, one from Ohio Edison, and one from Norfolk Southern. Uh, we're hoping Genessy Wyoming is within the next month, uh, Ohio Edison, we're still talking with them, we're probably talking next two to three months, and then Norfolk, Norfolk Southern is the next two to three months as well, so just to let you know, kinda timeframe on the last.
Nine twenty-four, approve the bridge painting project of two bridges on Western Reserve Greenway Phase Four project areas within the city limit of Niles. The estimate is four hundred and twenty thousand, and approve the transfer and appropriation of the funds necessary for this project from one fund to another, and authorize Zach Savet, Terrible County Metro Parks, to bid the project with applicable state and federal regulations. Uh, the project entails preparing existing structural steel for painting, grinding fins, tears and silvers, applying three field coats of O dot required paint to the structural steel, and providing for maintenance of traffic mobilization and performance. Um, funding is as follows, state capital budget appropriation reimbursable, city of Niles has pledged twenty-four three hundred, and the county commissioners, we have, we pledged or not pledged ninety-five thousand seven hundred.
That's why I have it as an estimate amount, that you guys need to make the decision today on whether to move forward the project or not. We do have the three hundred thousand dollar state capital budget, and this is what the city Niles has been mailing back and forth, you know, in our.
I think, I think it's imperative, we've been working on this for over a year and a half, right?
Yeah, so.
And we got the, we got the state funding, we got the potential to have that three hundred thousand, plus Niles is kicking in a little bit, I think this is the way we can make this happening.
We got the title, the bridge, all those things are finally done, they're all finalized?
Correct, yeah, yeah, correct. And that's all, that package is down to the state D N. R., it's essentially.
And this is just gonna be for a bike trail bridge, or walking bridge, or?
It's to paint the two bridges, there's a one over one sixty-one, or State Route one sixty-nine, and one over Robbins Avenue in downtown Niles. There's technically four bridges in that area, but there's two that we have purchased.
As your bike trail bridges.
Correct.
If I may, Julie Green, sorry, I haven't said my name till now, but I have to speak up, 'cause I've been working on this project for twenty-four years. This is all part of the Great Ohio Lake River Greenway, I I always like to give a little background on it, because it is such an important regional trail system, that brings a lot of recreational tourism to our area, I just wanted to bring that up. Um, I know you're asking questions about, you know.
It's all new to me, so.
Right, right, so for those that aren't familiar with the project, I started working on it with Gary, at the Planning Commission in two thousand and one, and so to date, I think we've secured, I don't know, upwards of thirty million dollars to complete phases one through four, with a very, I think, less than three percent of that has come from local funding. The five hundred thousand dollars I mentioned, Zach secured several years ago, that will be used to offset the local match required for the construction piece. This is the last and final phase that connects city of Niles at State Route forty-six, where the current, their current greenway ends, and at Burton Street in the city of Warren, it's like a three mile stretch.
Yes, yes, three, four miles.
And the reason for its longevity is related to the major news about Kimberly Clark. The first, um, right of way plan was to have it sort of skirt Pine Avenue, and so that all had to be redesigned when the, um, news came that they were looking to locate there, so that's what Zach was explaining, it's on the east side of the east property that's on the sort of like the farthest edge.
We have no objections from Port Authority, or?
No, 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 they, they.
No, they've been partners with us.
Yeah. Apart from the beginning, yeah.
Initially, initially, the site was gonna infringe on that, but since it's on a different route, and knowing that Kimberly Clark had the investment here.
Right, right.
But whenever we see these types of investments, I think it benefits us, I mean, it can't be overstated how much recreational tourism brings here, and how much the people of Terrible County use the bike trail. If you, if you go on there, it's being used constantly, by walkers, by bikers, it's, it's a, it's a great marketing tool, and it's good for the people that live here.
Alright, please devil's advocate just for a second, that's my nature.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we're expanding on the bike trail here, we're connecting things, and then we'll have construction costs coming up. But we've heard, since I've been here for the last year and a half, that the bike trails in disrepair in some areas up north, and it's been at a point where it needs resurface and repaving, where's that money gonna come from, and we're adding more bike trails that we're gonna have to maintain ourselves, I would imagine, is there, are there grants out there, is there one that you know of, is there any hope in the horizon? As we keep building these things, we gotta take care of them, we can't just keep expanding, and then not think about down the road, how are we gonna pay for it down the road to repave it, we get the initial state money now for construction and all this stuff, but then all of a sudden, we're left with something, I don't wanna just an abandoned car in someone's front yard, 'cause we can't afford the maintenance someday. You know, we, we need to consider that as we move forward this, or at least have some type of a plan that we can establish of, we're not just gonna build it and worry about it later.
It's no different than any of our assets, we have to allocate funds to put back into it, like we would a building, like we would anything else. I mean, that's up to us, there's no, there's no grants out there to do that.
Yeah, a- and if they are, they're very minimal, we're talking, um, the one grant fund, there's only one grant fund that you can do repairs with, the other one, uh, the five hundred thousand dollars that Julie mentioned, that's for new construction, the only other one is, what was it, two hundred fifty thousand? And that's, that's not guaranteed every year, you know, like you would have to continuously apply and, you know, do that type of work for those grant funds.
Is there, is there anything we can do with a state representative or state senator, we just have that seven hundred million dollar thing that Sandy O'Brien got a lot, brought a lot back to Terrible? Is there anything potentially where we can work as Commissioners, with our state reps, our legislators, to, to come up with some funding, 'cause the state's all behind this bike trail from Lake Erie to Ohio River, but they, they need to come forth with something of, if you build it, we'll help you down the road maintain it.
Um, couple things, Martha, you're a Terrible County Auditor, one thing that you should note is, the, the bridge painting that we're talking about, money for that has come out of the capital budget, what you were just referring to.
Yeah. That's true.
Um, the other thing that I have noticed is that in other counties, specifically in Ash Chevula, where they have the trail, they have community organizations that adopt parts of the trail to help with maintenance, and that may be something that we wanna e- explore, um, and see how Ash Chevula does it, um, 'cause I, I do bike that trail, I biked it in the north as well, and, um, I think, you know, if there's a way to get folks involved, um, one of the things I wanted to point out is, we, we have, hopefully, we're going to have an influx of people coming into this county, working in this county, and that will be an asset for them, and perhaps some of the companies might be able to help us with some of that, too, as time goes on. Um, you and I were talking just before the meeting started, a little bit about the issue with the bridge in the northern part, which is where we have the detour, where we can't, and and we now actually have the detour, thankfully, um, and you might wanna mention how that's going to get.
Yeah, so we did get part of the Appalachian Community Grant Program, um, that the governor came and announced, here at the amphitheater, we got three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars for to, uh, fix the slide and reopen the trail, so that's another one hundred percent grant, you know, but this one's, you know, while it's not a hundred percent of the project, it's, you know, there is no technical local match, you know, for a lot of these things. And then, if you saw in the papers, also, we're in line, hasn't been approved yet, but there's an petition, and an additional two hundred fifty thousand for Phase Four as well.
Right.
In the capital budget.
Yeah, so to summarize, Julie Green, um, regarding the bike trail, the Great Ohio Lake River Greenway, I try to mention that every time, because sometimes you say, uh, the Western Reserve Greenway, the Mount.
Yeah.
It's a four county bike trail, it's huge, it draws in hundreds of thousands of people a year. The long-term plan for this project, which the Commissioners historically have committed to over the last twenty-five years or more, has been to secure the grant funding, you know, provide minimal local matching funds, with the understanding that the mid-long term maintenance would be the responsibility of the county. As you know, the Metro Parks is funded solely by the Commissioners, and so, you know, I think it's obvious what the issues are with that, with their budget, with the failing levy, um, you, in order to sort of have a, uh, organized volunteer force, you need staff people to organize that. Um, I, I don't know, does Ash Chevula have a levy now?
Yeah, they have a levy, yeah.
They also have a wonderful Ash Chevula Growth Foundation, that has historically been in support of their sections, and getting their sections completed. So, um, you know, you have, you invest money.
That's why you can't compare apples to apples, because they're not using their general fund dollars, they have a levy, and we're. Because they're not using their general fund dollars. They have a levy and we're, it's falling right on the commissioners and the, and the general fund's back to, to maintain these. What we do need though is, is a, is a maintenance plan.
Okay, okay, I can get that.
Is to what we, you know, we need to break this up into sections. We can't look at it in just one bit.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And, and tackle this yearly.
And, and that's something too. I, I met with Representative Santucci yesterday. One of the things we talked about was infrastructure around the Mosquito Lake region. And he said, you know, we need to have a project. You know, he needs to be able to go to the legislature with a project to fund, not just we need money for this, we need money for that and then go build something. We need to have what that project actually is. And this is something where maybe we, we start to, like you said, create the long-term maintenance plan and have that project for whatever. Then we can go to the legislature and possibly get a bill.
And say, hey, this is what we.
Right, and, and being of course with David Thomas coming from Ashibula, he's well aware of both counties and how they connect together. And that's something that, um, I, I think we just start, need to think in that direction. Instead of building it and then hoping later we get funds to do it, we need to create these projects. And again, for Mosquito Lake, I'm gonna work with Nick, uh, and David, um, to start coming up with projects around Mosquito Lake that when the next round of windfall money comes out from the state, we actually have a project to attach it to and not just a pipe dream.
Well, we, we also, I mean, those two projects, we're talking about painting the bridge and, and the bridge up north that's get, that's gonna get fixed through state dollars. Um, those are two projects that we've, we've been successful on, capital projects on the bike trail. So it's not like we're not obtaining funds to do that. It's just, when you talk about the routine maintenance of it, like paving and all, all that kinda stuff, that's where he needs to, we either need to have an, as Ashibula does, where you adopt a portion of the, of the trail, sponsors or anything like that, whether businesses wanna sponsor a portion of the trail, whatever it may be, um, keep the trail intact and to keep that maintenance going so that.
This is also some.
It's not going in disrepair.
This is also something with the new jobs Ohio region, the Lake River region. Uh, meeting that I had last week also, a conversation on the phone was, we need to start delineating some things we need in the county where we can work with that group at the same time and they, they are working with the businesses in those areas. And maybe that could be part of their plans.
Yes.
That, that they provide too, but we need to feed them information of what we need for them to incorporate that into the partnerships they're building with the economic community.
I mean, right now, what, what would you estimate needs maintained on the trail? I mean, not due for resurfacing, right?
Uh, there are certain areas.
Certain areas maybe, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
But they're not the large majority of the area.
No, no, there's just a lot of tree roots and actually, um, Yale with the Sheriff's Inlet Program is out there right now, uh, chipping up roots and putting in blacktops. So, you know, we have a little bit of a plan to do that sort of stuff, but nothing, you know, like old life paving.
Poling paving.
Yeah.
Or at least portions paving, you know.
Correct, yeah.
Well, that's what we.
Between X run, X run.
But we need to come up with a, with a yearly maintenance plan.
Okay.
Uh, that's constantly changing and a living document that we can go towards.
Yeah.
This is our next project, you know.
Yeah, and I've worked with Gary Schaefer on the bridge painting, so, you know, I just put him in his office for, you know, in the engineer's office for helping me out.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't, you know, that's not in my belt with to.
Do bridges, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I know.
So, you know, they were a great help. Um, so I can work, try to work with their office to get a plan, you know.
Yes.
They might have an intern or somebody they can help me get at least an idea of, okay, you know, this section is probably the worst due here to here.
This year, next year, tackle that section. That's what we need to add.
Yeah, and I can get that for you.
All right, another question too. Ninety-five thousand seven hundred estimated for the bridge out of the commissioner's budget. Is any of that qualified to come out of the engineer's budget? Being that it is a bridge?
Commissioner's on it.
It's, it's our project though. It's our.
Yeah.
Our bike trail, right? Is it?
Correct, yeah, that's.
I, I don't know. I don't know.
I'm saying we get an engineer's estimate for it. We get Gary Schaefer involved in it. Is there anything the engineers, they're kicking out their funds or does it qualify for anything?
I don't know if they're, if they'd be willing, if they would be willing to. I don't know if, this is Julie Green. If they'd be willing to, I don't know if they could, but I do know that the current agreement is between the Ohio Rail Development Commission and.
Well, that's for north. We're talking the two bridges in Niles that are on Phase Four.
Oh, okay.
These ones were referred to.
So these would be actually owned by?
Yes.
Trumbull County. I thought you were talking about the bridge being repaired.
No, no, yeah, it's the two river bridges that we've got on CSX.
Gotcha.
All right, when engineer's estimate is mentioned, you're not referring to a hu- a highway engineer, are you?
Correct, yeah, they helped me with this.
Oh, okay, okay, because we, we determine engineer's estimate for any engineer.
In-kind service.
Okay, but this was, okay. Well, you mentioned Gary Schaefer's, that's why I assumed it was highway engineer.
But that's like an in-kind service that they provide.
Yeah, yeah, correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. He, because I asked him for help.
Is there anyone on the phone from the engineer's office? Gary or Steve or anybody? Star six, if you, if you are. Hit star six and I'll meet yourself if you in. Looks like we got somebody.
Is it, is it turned up?
Yeah. Something to look into.
Yeah, yeah, and I can certainly ask them, but, I mean, you'll still have to come up with a hundred percent of the cost anyways, no matter where the funds are coming out of, that you'll have to pay and then we can get reimbursed by whoever. You know, so I can, you know, I can ask, you know, answer's probably gonna be no, just because it's not on a county highway, but I'll ask.
Julie Green, two more questions. Sorry Zach, I put you on the hot seat.
That's right.
Um, do you include maintenance as part of your budget request annually?
Yes.
Okay.
For the bike trails. The generally it's not, you know, because generally the capital budgets haven't been.
Right.
You know, even considered, so.
So you just need to provide a more detailed one?
Yeah.
And then the other question is, I see you're transferring from Fund nine twenty-one to nine eighty-three. Are those grant funds?
The nine twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
I have no idea. That was, at least I know we worked with Sherri to figure out. And that's where traditionally those funds have come from, so I'm not even sure.
So to, to Julie's point, when you're coming to budget hearings to make sure you delineate, you know, the, it can't just be, well, we gotta repay the, it's coming up, we gotta repay the bike trail. Well, we know that, but this year we're gonna focus on this mile, these miles. And we're gonna get this done. And that's part of our, you can make it part of your capital outlay or your, you know, just part of your budget, so.
Okay, and I will do that.
Like that, that, because that's more palatable to us because we can actually see.
Yeah.
As opposed to, oh my gosh, we gotta pay the entire bike trail.
Yeah, gotcha, yeah.
Do we have, like, like on the highway, they have mile marker posts? Do we have marker posts or anything so we can go to like sixty-two point four and know right where to go?
Correct.
If there's a problem?
Yeah, yeah, so we, well, we have between each road, there are, there's mileage on our map for between each road. So while we don't have mileage, you know, in between each one, um, because we're waiting on other sections being painted, so we don't, haven't necessarily painted on the, on the trail itself.
Good stuff. At least we're getting this painted.
Yeah.
Oh, it's been since, one of my very first meetings a year and a half ago. It was with Mr. Taylor about, hey, you got a bridge here, needs painted. I got painters, need work. What's going on with this bridge?
And Niles committed funds and we got the capital improvements. It was just us getting, well, you were doing a lot of those easements and a lot of different.
Yeah, CSX.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was absolutely a nightmare. I don't wanna relive with CSX.
Yeah, it always is.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we went back and forth with them, I don't know, ten, fifteen times with, nope, that's, and they wouldn't tell us what was exactly wrong because it was just wrong and we had to prove what we were saying.
Right.
So we had to do search in the kind of courthouse, so. Uh, yeah, it was just, we were.
Well, couldn't see it come to fruition, fine.
Yeah.
So there's an actual resolution from Niles already that?
No, there is nothing in writing from Niles.
So we need to get that from Niles too?
Yeah, and I can get that from Niles. I, they pledged, uh, you know, mayor had pledged that, no.
Yeah.
So.
Any emails as, as mentioned, as much in writing in that way, but it's, there's never been anything formally passed by their council.
Correct, yes.
Back to my question about the fund number. The reason I ask that, I'm not an accountant, but I know that with all of our different grant funds, we cannot transfer between them. That's why I asked.
Martha, when you stepped out of the room, Julie had asked, uh, this fund number nine twenty-one transferred to fund number nine eighty-three.
That's.
Do you wanna know those were grant funds or what they were?
No, nine twenty-one is sales tax.
Yeah.
I, I was just asking a question.
And, and Christie had, Christie had seen this, so I had been texting with Christie. No, nine twenty-one is general sales tax.
Gotcha.
Good, thank you.
Thanks Zach. Twenty-five, receiving place on file monthly financial report for Tourism Bureau submitted by Beth Carmichael. Twenty-six, established the creation of Behavioral Health Grant Fund known as Fund Number one oh two for youth of Trumbull County Juvenile Court. Funds being created to accept the grant from Ohio Department of Youth Services to create two comfort sensory rooms in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars on a reimbursement basis, due no later than October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Twenty-seven, to adopt the resolution declaring necessary to levy a renewal tax in excess of the ten mil limitation to supplement this general fund appropriations at the same rate as existing levy for the purposes of support of children's services and the care and placement of children in Trumbull County, Ohio at a rate not to exceed point eight mils for each one dollar taxable value for the period of ten years commencing in twenty twenty-five, first to and calendar year twenty twenty-six. And the Director Clerk of this Board is certify a copy of the resolution to Trumbull County Auditor with the request that said, "Auditor certify to this Board all information described in R C fifty-seven oh five oh three." So this is a renewal for children's services that will be on the November ballot this year.
Yes.
And twenty-eight?
Did you wanna add anything? I'm sorry.
Just Becky Sporale, you're Trumbull County Children's Services. I do appreciate your support. Barbeque levy that will be on the ballot in place in November, so thanks for your, your ongoing support of our agency.
Thank you. Well, we thank you for being a renewal also.
Yes.
Had discussions as you've probably heard of recent weeks as far as renewal versus replacement versus additional. Um, to renew something that we're already paying for, we've been paying for, we're kinda used to paying that amount.
Yeah.
And we highly encourage our citizens to continue to support all renewals that we have and that keeps organizations like Children's Services functioning and doing the great work that they do. Number twenty-eight, adopt the resolution declaring necessary to levy a renewal tax in excess of the ten mil limitation at the same rate of the existing levy pursuant to R C fifty-seven oh five two two one for the purpose of the operation of alcohol and drug addiction programs and mental health programs at a rate not exceeding one mil for each one dollar taxable value for a period of ten years commencing in twenty twenty-five, first to and calendar year twenty twenty-six. And Director Clerk of this Board is certify a copy of the resolution to Trumbull County Auditor with the request that said, "Auditor certify the Board all information described in the revised code." So in this one is the mental health, uh, program. And that is a renewal also.
Yep.
And we knew those were coming down the pike.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
As is the next one.
Adopt the resolution declaring necessary to level a renewal tax in excess of ten mil limitation at the same rate as the existing levy pursuant to R C fifty-seven oh five nineteen L and R C fifty-seven oh five two two one for the purpose of providing for the necessary requirements of the Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities for the operation of programs and services by said board, including the Fairhaven Program and for the acquisition, construction, renovation, financing, maintenance and operation of mental retardation and developmental disabilities facilities at a rate not exceeding two point two five mils for each one dollar of taxable value for a period of ten years commencing in twenty twenty-five, first to and calendar year twenty twenty-six. And the Director Clerk of this Board is certify a copy of the resolution to Trumbull County Auditor with the request that said, "Auditor certify to this Board all information described in R C fifty-seven oh five oh three." This one here for the Board of Developmental Disabilities. And I gotta tell you, I, I had the senior levy meeting at their facility.
Yes.
And I got a chance to take a tour. Um, I, I believe, uh, someone's name was Quincy potentially that ran one of the programs. I could be wrong on that. I feel horrible about that, but, um, I get a tour of the place and it was phenomenal. I mean, the, the way the employees there are dedicated to their job. Every staff member I saw there had a smile on their face. They were, they were all helping some facet of developmental disabilities. And from the building itself to the workers, to the programs they showed me that they do, um, I was, I walked out of there like really, really proud that, wow, Trumbull County really has their stuff together when it comes to, to this realm of society. And, and so kudos to all the staff members that were there. Uh, the Director reached out to me after that. He wasn't there the day that I was there. Um, but I had met some of the different department heads that were there and very, very warm reception from them. Uh, they explained everything in detail to me, what they do. And, and to the man or to the woman, every one of them, you know, had pride beaming in their eyes and they were explaining to me what they do and why they do what they do and how long they've been there and, um, just, we were in really, really, really good hands. So this is something I'm, I'm more than happy to make sure that, that we support this renewal tax for all these programs. But in particular, that was one that really, really touched me when I was there a couple of weeks ago. It was phenomenal.
Yeah.
So, um, and then we know in addition to that, well, the senior levy. It just so happens, we are the board that's here in the ten year that it pops up, that, for these are ten year renewals, that we happen to be the ones when the music stops to have to deal with this. We know taxes are unpopular, but these are at least taxes we've already been paying for the last ten years. These are ones that people have already budgeted in their, when they've lived in their house for the last ten years. It's not an increase. Um, now the state is the ones that dumped the increase on us with their values. It's not our county auditor. It's not the county doing it.
Yep.
And in respect to that, that's why these agencies are not asking for replacement or additionals. You know, we know that people are already taxed to death. But there are some services, just as humans, we need to support. We need to, to help, um, children's services. We need to help, uh, uh, drug and alcohol addicted. We need to help developmental disabilities. We need to help our seniors. Um, with that said, with the seniors, when I had that meeting, you know, they were asking for a replacement, potentially a, additional. I think now it's more of the, they understand why they need a renewal and they're looking at what areas they can cut the fat possibly to be able to survive in, in today's economic times without having to ask for more money. One of the things I brought up was, um, like Auto Deodor did with the dog pound. You know, we, we will donate money when we pass on, there's people donating two hundred thousand, this and that, for the dogs. We need to come up with something where we support our seniors because we're all gonna be there someday. And there are some people that are, um, better off than others. And there are some people that don't have children to pass it down to. Um, there are states, things like that. I think we only need a million dollars. In the community we live in, with the generosity that I've seen as far as I've been here, I don't think we need to go to the senior citizens themselves to pay a tax to help other senior citizens. I think there are enough of them and enough of the working class that we need to come up with some form of a donation program, some form of a, and a state thing where seniors can help other seniors upon their passing or people that are well-to-do, blessed in this world, doing better than others can help take care of the seniors so we don't have to raise the rates on the eighty percent of the seniors that are out there that don't get the services, um, through there. So I would like this board to move in that direction somewhat and Auto Deodor, if you have ideas for that, you've done, I mean, I don't know how much money you raised just with the donation thing on the dog license, but I know it's some. And I know we've had a few people, um, leaving their wills money to the dog pound. And if we can take care of dogs and cats in this county, surely we can take care of senior citizens. Everyone's got that one next door neighbor or somebody that this is a way that maybe they can, you know, pass it on to help others so we don't have to tax their grandkids.
Um, I, I, I'm not, I don't really have a whole lot to say, Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor, about that, that idea. But I will say that it's important to understand that the renewals, those levies don't act, they didn't receive anything from this increase, from the increase in value.
Right.
Because those levies, when those were enacted, they are set on what they can raise from the property values at the time, right? So they actually help decrease the effective rate when the values go up. They're not collecting any more money. The only way that they collect more money is on new construction, right? So they're, with these and then the senior levy, they're not gonna collect much more money than they already have been collecting. It doesn't affect it. What happens when we have these value increases, the things, the entities that get more money are first of all the county and also any townships on the inside mileage that ten mils doesn't. doesn't change, right? And the schools that are at the twenty mil floor with, um, their levies except for their emergency and bond levies, those levies can't go below twenty altogether. We have, almost all of our schools are at the twenty mil floor. That's really unvoted millage at this point. That's a, that's, that's at the state level, but when you look at what we've put on our website where you can tell, you can go and you can click on an entity, and you can see what that entity collected last year from property taxes versus what we estimate to collect this year, you can see exactly where that money is going, where that increase is going.
Well, and that will be our jobs too, is to sell that, that just because your taxes went up on your property value, doesn't mean these programs are getting any impact.
Right, and these are those entities that are, that are doing the renewal, they need to impress that. It really is not a new tax. The only extra money that they get on these renewals each year and each, is when we have, um, new construction.
Wish we hope for a lot of that in the future, but...
Absolutely. That'll be one way that we can grow some of these programs.
Okay. Number thirty, approve the renewal of the Trumbull County Commissioners of the Warren-Trumbull Home Consortium Agreement for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-seven. Twenty-five to twenty-seven agreement will include the city of Warren and Trumbull County along the city of Hubbard and the villages of Lordstown, Falls, Orangeville, West Farmington, and Yankee Lake per the recommendation of Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Uh, Julie, you want to explain this?
Sure. Um, so this is something that we are required to renew every several years. The city of Warren is the direct grantee from HUD for home funds, and we enter into consortium with them to share with those funding. Um, and we've utilized many of the funds to match the chip funds that we apply for. And so the reason for the, um, exclusive list of cities and villages, that has to do with whether or not they, cities and villages apply for chip funding or if they choose to opt out of the home consortium. Some, I think McDonald Village opted out of the home consortium, and then, um, the cities of Gerard and Niles received funding through their chip partnership, therefore they're not eligible to receive funding through the home. It's sort of a balancing thing, but it's just a standard agreement. We did send it over for review and approval through the prosecutor's office and are asking the commissioners to approve it.
Okay. Thirty-one, concur with the Trumbull County Planning Commission authorized me, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, sign and execute the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, RLF Administration Agreement for the period beginning January one, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six with the State of Ohio Department of Development.
This particular agreement, we have been reaching out to the state since last October, asking for the updated revolving loan fund agreement. They were working on revising the content, and we just received it probably in the last two weeks.
Okay, so the deadline thing, January first, when it's starting, there's no, the state's on the state, not a...
Correct, correct. And it was sent to, um, our prosecutor's office and reviewed and we're asking commissioners to approve.
Thirty-two, authorize the acceptance of maintenance bond from Erie Insurance Company for the PY twenty-twenty-three HSTS Reserve Program for two home sewage treatment systems installed by Two M Services. Uh, Two M Services completed installation of two sewage treatment systems in Hartford and Howland Township funded through that program. Two-year maintenance bond for the work completed in the amount of twenty percent, sixty-two eighty, of the final project cost thirty-one thousand four hundred for a period of two years as required by the contract document and is valid for two years commencing May twenty-nine, twenty-four and ending May twenty-nine, twenty-six.
Sounds explanatory unless you want me to go into details.
We just have to keep it on, we keep the bond for two years after the work's done in case there's an issue.
Yeah, maintenance, maintenance bonds are different from, Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning. Maintenance bonds are a little different than performance bonds. Maintenance bonds, they automatically expire. There's no real tracking that goes with them. Of course, if something occurs during that period, we have them on file and can pull them, whereas a performance bond has to be actually released on the journal by the commissioners.
Okay. Thirty-three, award a contract to Freedom Roofing Windows and Siding for the Gerard Multi-Generational Center Gym Roof Replacement Project in the amount of sixty-eight thousand seven thirty-four, and authorize Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to enter into contract agreement with the Freedom Roofing Window and Siding LLC in order to meet the rules and regulations of the CDBG program and local county requirements. The engineer's estimate for this project is ninety-four thousand five fifty.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning. Since, uh, our office has not worked with this particular company, I did do some, a review of a number of things, and I believe those are all included in the packet I sent over, um, you know, checking on things like, um, filings, UCC filings, Better Business Bureau, OSHA, things like that. And I checked references and also ran it by our prosecutor's office as well as our consulting firm, and everyone agrees that this is the lowest and best. I know that we typically like to, you know, I, I wanted to do a little bit of extra review because I, I think it's a good practice to award to local companies. However, this is grant-funded, and community development block grant funds require, you know, they're, they're very specific about what criteria you can use, and I spelled that out also in the agenda, um, backup documents.
Do we have any local companies bid on it?
We did. We had Groover Siding, and we had Boken Fund. So...
Where is Woodville, Ohio? You have any idea?
Good question.
I've been all over the state, or I've never heard of Woodville.
I have not either.
Four-three-four.
I want to say it's an hour or two west. Everybody's getting out their Google Maps.
Yeah, it's in Sandusky County.
Okay.
Somewhere west, not too far. But, yeah, I did speak with references. They included on their, um, with their bid document, and they recommended, you know, they said, they stated they would recommend, working with them, they do a very good job.
All right.
And all the bid documents were complete for all three contractors. It was just a matter of difference in pricing. And obviously, this is subject to federal prevailing wage rates, and so all certified payroll reports will come to our office where I, Emily checks them, I approve them. So I know that that's always a concern with our local, um, union officials.
All right, thirty-four, authorize the Planning Commission to submit an amendment request for an extension of time for grant number SP twenty ICS one, PY twenty twenty, Appalachian Development Program, to the State of Ohio Appalachian Development Program and authorize Danny Malloy to sign any related documents.
Uh, Julie Green, this is for the Yankee Lake Sanitary Square Project, which Gary can speak to you on the details if he wants.
Yeah, Commissioners, when we got the Appalachia grant for the Yankee Lake Project, Kathy Zooktown and Eastgate let me know, oh, by the way, there's an extra sixty-eight thousand dollars or around that number available in state A R C grants. Would you like that also? And definitely, yes. And so it, and this Appalachia money flows through CDBG instead of the other Appalachia money that I got that flows through EPA. So Emily and Julie have agreed to help me with the administration of this additional sixty-eight thousand here, and Emily was required to, um, put in this amendment request for an extension of time to give us a little more time to spend that.
Fantastic. Great job getting that too. Anytime there's more money and a little bit of work on our end to do it, sign us up. Thirty-five, authorize Trumbull County Planning Commission to request price proposals from three or more paving companies for the Howland Scope Center Parking Lot Resurfacing Project funded through PY twenty-three CDBG Community Development Grant Program, B-F-23 ICS one, Project One Activity Two, proposals we do to the Office of the Clerk, Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, no later than three P.M. on July twenty-fifth.
Julie Green, this is, uh, one of the regular CDBG allocation projects, one of many. So we already bid out the, um, equipment for the senior center, the parking lot, and then soon we'll be bidding out the remainder of the renovation project activities that were approved by commissioners last year.
You're popular girl today, Julie, number thirty-six.
I'm always popular.
So authorize Trumbull County Planning Commission to send notification letters to all of Trumbull County's currently registered and licensed home sewage treatment systems installers announcing request for price proposal packets are now available for pickup at Trumbull County Planning Commission. Fee of ten dollars is being charged per price proposal packet. Price proposal packets include technical specs for ten owner-occupied households identified and qualified to receive financial assistance to PY twenty-twenty-three and twenty-four O E P A Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Principal Forgiveness HSTS Reserve Program.
Julie Green, uh, this is a project we've been administering for over fourteen years. We work with the county building official, the combined health district, to put together these technical specifications and assist people with replacing their failing home sewage treatment system. We can also use this funding for sanitary lateral connections, but for this particular year, we're required to use the full allocation for septic replacements because they allowed us to use last year's for West Farmington sanitary lateral connection. So, um, if there's funding left over from this, after this, we can potentially use that for sanitary lateral systems. But both, both lists are, you know, there's a waiting list on both.
Thirty-seven, approve the detailed drawings for the North State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, known as County Project Number One S nineteen, the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Metropolitan Sub-District.
All right, Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer. Commissioners, this is one of the A R P projects. It's a short extension out on State Line Road. Um, Pennsylvania's on one side of the road, on our side of the road, we have six houses out there that can't access that sewer that's on the other side of the road because it's going through their backyard. I think I've explained this when we did the A R P application, but anyway, we want to move forward and get the P T I for this. So when we do send in this resolution saying, uh, to approve the detailed drawings, basically we need you to sign this cover sheet so we can send those plans down to EPA for approval.
Thirty-eight, adopt the resolution confirming and levying final assessments for the cost of construction of the State Road Phase Two Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project Number Four S sixteen in Champion Township within Trumbull County's Combined Sanitary Sewer District.
Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer. Commissioners, I was able to, uh, put together the final cost on that State Road Phase Two project, and at the public hearing, we, uh, estimated that the cost will be seventy-eight point eight, seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents per front foot. We came in at fifty-four dollars and eighteen cents. For the service connection, we estimated thirty-five hundred per service connection. We came in at twenty-five hundred. So we came in at significantly less than what was, uh, uh...
And what you told the people, what was presented at the public hearing?
Yes. So, I owe a lot of that to the staff, uh, the original estimate, we were using consultant engineers, and we did a lot, a vast majority of the engineering, well, all the, uh, engineering in-house. So that significantly cut into the cost. And also, the, the Commissioners, you did award, um, what was it, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars of A R P into this project. I mean, that helped significantly too. So, I'm, I'm pleased with the results of that project and how we were able to reduce those assessments.
And when will people see the results of that? When will they be actually hooking up?
Oh, they have been hooking up, uh, and quite a few of them are in that county-wide, uh, connection, um, and we're putting a list together for that county-wide, uh, uh, service lateral assistance program, and Julie and Emily have been working on getting a list together. Bill McCoskey from our office, he has been on inspecting these houses for the connections. So, uh, some of the ones that don't qualify, they have connected into it.
All right. Approve the detailed sanitary sewer drawings for the Pendleton Gilmer Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project Warren Township, Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Metropolitan Sub-District, known as County Project Number Six S twenty-two.
All right, Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer. Commissioners, this is the second part of the Meadowbrook Project. Well, we, we need you to sign these cover sheets, get these drawings down, get them approved by the EPA. We want that P T I before those nominations are due in September so we can get another four million dollars for this project too. So, this one, uh, you know, it's for you to sign the cover sheet.
Okay. All right, we did number forty with BIM, and now we'll go to forty-one. Uh, to increase the Ohio Healthy Aging Grant Award, the Trumbull County Office of Early Affairs Home Delivered Meal Program provided to Trumbull County residents sixty years of age or older in amount eleven thousand four thirty-six, for a total award one-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand four thirty-six to sustain continued home delivery meal operation for the term through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The additional amount was awarded by the State of Ohio Healthy Aging Notice of Granted Reward, received five fourteen twenty-four. This is the only funding source available to Trumbull County Office of Early Affairs for twenty twenty-four, and once depleted, the consumers are to be transitioned to other Trumbull County levy-funded meal provider contracted agencies. Per projections and use of these funds, TCOEA will cease operations September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Yeah, this is, uh, the program we were weaning out, um, as we lost the Director there, Brandy Greenwood, and then there's money that came available to keep the program going, so we still need these guys to be able to deliver the meals, and this is an extension of the timeframe to match up with the amount they have for the grants for the meals. We still need, we need to extend the amount of labor for the guys to go out there and deliver them. So, you know, happily support that, and, uh, I know those guys work, you know, for very little pay compared to what some of those guys retired from other departments, and, you know, it's more of a labor of love than it is money in their pocket. So definitely we want to keep them going and provide the service they provide. And with that said, that finishes up this agenda. I know it's a little bit long, but, you know, we're missing a week, not so bad, and Gary and, and Julie's not in here right now, but, um, fantastic work on the stuff that you guys do. People sometimes talk about county government and, you know, you get the stigma of, oh, it's a good-paying job, it's lazy, you don't have to do anything, it's good benefits, you just, uh, let anybody that's going to throw mud at any county employee, let them step in your shoes for one day to try to understand one of these grant programs. Just from what you and Julie said today, I mean, you're saving taxpayers millions of dollars, not thousands, not hundreds, millions, by the work that you do every day to find this grant money and not only find it, but apply for it correctly and bring the money in, and I couldn't walk in your shoes for one single day either, you or Julie. So me and Marv got the easy job here. We just have to shake our heads yes or no, and, but we know you're doing the hard work, rolling the sleeves of getting it done, but this is Champion Project itself. I watched you stand there and tell the people, here's what it's going to cost you, and if it comes under, we're going to, we're going to work for you, and you just saved them big dollars, not just a lot, not a buck or two on the, on what you're talking. You're saving them a lot of money to hook up and to get the services, and you backed up the word that you said. You didn't say, well, we'll just put it into overrun for something else, we'll use it down the road, or, I mean, you, you basically fought for the people on this one and got every dollar you can so they don't have to pay it.
Right.
And that's, that's commendable. A lot of other servants wouldn't do that.
All right, well, Julie and I, that's both of our, uh, motivations, it is, to save the people and this county money.
Well, so...
Take care, and care is what we, we say, take care.
Well, it, it shows through the, the proof's in the pudding here. The proof's, here's the facts. If people want to see the facts, right here. You promised them one thing, and you gave them something even better that you didn't have to do, so that's fantastic.
And Gary, the hire of Phil McCoskey can't be...
And Gary, the hire of Phil McCoskey can't be understated. Uh, him being in-house and, and being able to design this, uh, in-house to save those residents, uh, considerable amount of money and has really paid his own salary.
Yes.
Uh, through, through doing these things, so.
Uh, well, as a matter of fact, Commissioner, on that point, we did receive eighty-one thousand dollars from the state for our services. So, that almost pays his entire yearly salary right on, right on one, uh, project.
And you just had another, what, sixty-eight thousand? It was, it came in that we didn't expect either. That's another salary of somebody right there just in grant money. So, that's, again, hats off to you, Gary, fantastic job.
Nice job, Gary.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Having Bob work for me ain't so bad either, but... Okay, does anyone else in the room have anything? Yes, go hard.
Go hard, Trumbull County Maintenance, uh, quick update, um, fairground bathrooms are about to move right along. So, if you have any chance, go take some pictures of the new facility. Uh, they're gonna start the window project, job and family July first, so the windows are going in, uh...
Tony Engineers Garage.
It's, it's, it's in the works for the, um, for the, uh, planning of when they're gonna start. Highway Engineers, we got that proposal back, self-construction, got the highway office project. Uh, it's a little over the estimated cost, but it's well under the twenty thousand, or twenty percent, uh, per code.
Ceilings and the family court.
I got a quote back from, uh, contractor, um, I'd have to discuss with Audrey Reuter where she went to pull the funds from, but I'd have to get another quote.
And, and what about damage from the storm this, last week? I heard we had some leaks.
There was just one leak here and a minor leak over the coffee machine over there, which there was no stain.
Wait a second.
I'm not, I'm downstairs in the process. And that's coming from the caulk from above. So, we got a price to do, Harman Street here, the caulk is deteriorating up top, you can over the edge, you'll see it separating. We paid to do the whole front facade, I think, two or three years ago, for thirty-five thousand. We need the other two sides of the building done too.
It's where, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor, the leak that we have is where we have, like, the addition.
Yeah, and I know where that comes, I know where that comes from.
And, and the biggest concern, although we've left the tarp in there in case we have that problem again, we have that, um, rotating file that's an electronic, it's electric, and it's right over. And there's no way to move that, it's built in, so it is a concern. We were able to catch everything, just the timing of that, um, worked out, we were still there when the, when the sky burst. And so, we were able to, you know, put things up and we protected everything. But I, you know, if we have another one like that, it's gonna be, it might be a problem. Uh, it's over top of a coffee machine as well, but I was more concerned that that's a pretty expensive piece of equipment there.
That's all third floor, of hers, third floor, and on that rooftop unit, I know, we know where that's coming.
Okay, and what about the, uh, artwork from tourism in the basement, so we could finish it?
I have those, I just haven't had them yet.
I was trying to find it.
My ear is off on a, uh, treatment leak, so, um, I'm shorthanded.
All right, do we have the charging stations and any of that stuff yet?
Yeah, I've not got there.
Okay, let's, we're gonna get that done, because I've been holding off, uh, AVI and Mr. Gas, so they wanna come to your thing. I know we got the eyesore, the elevator stuff sitting in there too right now, but we still need to do something as the floor's opening.
It's lump sum. Lump sum.
Have you heard anything from Mr. Bucio lately?
Can't.
What about the bathrooms downstairs? Anything on that?
Because it's federal money.
Sorry, Bill, sorry to dump it on you, but, you know, I got my little...
But you can.
Okay.
Can't be more, no, they can't.
I just wanted to give you guys a reminder about the senior levy. Um, I'm not here to advocate either way for any of it, but April, or August seventh is it deadline? And so, if you guys put it on regardless, if you get a recommendation from the board, um, you know, if you want it on the election, you have to.
I, I think in light of all these others, I mean, look at, all the others are renewals. And we've discussed that we would support a renewal and not a replacement.
Correct.
So, I, I would think that we would just put that, put it on.
Well, I, I wanted, when I, when I met with them two weeks ago...
Are they, are they...
They were gonna look and see what some, there were some situations, they were looking at adult protective services. They paid like two hundred and forty-five thousand, and they said that they don't think they need all that, you know, but they spend it. And so, they were gonna look to see if they could shave some money there. And they were, their subcommittee was gonna meet with Mr. Wolfter and, um, with other gentlemen, um, to see if they can come forth and see if there's any where else they could squeeze. They weren't happy about not having one, but they understood after I explained the whole big picture, that I think I had consensus of at least the majority of the room. Now, their chairman, their pre, and, uh, vice president or whatever weren't there at that meeting, but the rest of the board members were. And they all seemed to be in agreement that, yeah, we can, we're gonna have to do this. But I brought up the idea of, we're only talking a million bucks. I know that that's only a million, but, like I said, there's benefactors, donors in the county. If we got into a pinch with something and we, we needed to come up with that, I think we can fill that in other ways without taxing the taxpayers, and...
Well, I, I think that you also need to look at what we're passing here today, or tomorrow, I should, I should say Friday.
Yes.
Um, is all these agencies could always use more funds and more resources, but they're, they're digging down and they're, they're just going with a renewal on all three accounts, so, um...
One question I had is, these are all ten years on this?
Yeah.
Can that, can we put a five-year on for seniors?
The senior levy is a five-year.
Is a five-year, yeah.
Oh, it is, right, right, it's not one, the other ones are ten, this will just...
And there's never been...
It's by statute.
Since oh five.
Well, they can be on that.
Since oh five or oh six.
Oh, five.
Yeah.
So, it is a three-step process, though. So, you know, if the, the deadline is on August seventh, it's a, there's three meetings in between.
Okay.
So, it just needs to happen. If, if, we'll go on next year, but it's on, still, like, this year.
We need it this year.
With the federal election, so we don't pay for it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's a...
Um, can you reach out to, um, Diana and just say, hey, we got the other ones, we don't have this one yet?
Reach out to me.
Yep.
Well, I, I reach out to her.
I mean, and she...
I do the resolution, and that was where, you know, she stressed the importance that they had, regards to whether or not they have a recommendation or not, like, the Commissioners still can make a decision on it.
Right, and, and we've discussed it.
And I, and I was, it's a renewal, I, I was a hundred percent supporter of renewal and fight for it. A, and an additional or replacement this time, no, I could not support. And for the reasons I stated, not that we don't care about seniors, but only a small percentage of them are utilizing the service. All seniors would pay into it for the percentage that does use it, and I think we can come up with those additional funds in other ways if we get creative and we reach out to the community for help voluntarily. Okay.
Commissioner, did you want me to read what the state's had about that particular item?
Yes, if you can, yeah.
Julie Green, um, this is relative to, what item number is that?
That was, uh...
The drawer, multi-gen roof fit, they're going backways.
That was, uh...
Number was that?
Thirty-three, turn item thirty-three really quickly.
I'm sorry I had to step out, I was talking to the...
You just missed a few compliments when you stepped out.
Oh, really? That's nice.
For the work you and Gary do.
That's nice, appreciate it. Um, so, I, in the bid review that I sent with everything over...
Yeah, I was looking at it.
It's, uh, uh, I had asked a while ago, feedback from the Ohio Department of Development on the, using the bid criteria for these funds, because they're very specific about, you know, uh, procurement policies and things like that with CDBG funding.
Yes.
And they stated that generally, communities should not be placing additional restrictions on the bidding process outside of the narrow scope provided by regulation. And I listed those in two CFR Part two hundred and ORC nine point three one two. And if the contractor's bid is a good bid, which, you know, that's why I was doing the review on that particular company, because I had not worked with them in the past. And the county has no documented violations from past performance, it should be considered the lowest and best. So, that's straight from our funder, and then, you know, if you look at two CFR Part two hundred, consideration should be given to contractor integrity, compliance with public policy, record of past performance. In this case, I checked the references, and financial and technical resources. And then, experience of the bidder, the bidder's financial condition, conduct, performance on previous contracts, you know, ability to execute the contract properly, um...
Not, not to mention they're under the Engineers' Estimate and, uh...
Very much so.
And, and very much under the other, the two bids.
Right, right, and, and they, we're not able to contact them prior to the award of the contract to discuss, you know, do you fully understand the... And so, the process is the Commissioners will award it, and then our consultant will meet with them and discuss it. But based on their resume, I think, I think they understand it, and it's a lump sum project, so I don't know how you can, uh...
So, no change order?
I don't believe, I mean, it would be really tough to get a change order out of a lump sum contract. Because it basically says, figure it out, you know, I mean, there's, they, they do put together technical specifications, um, but the means and methods, I don't have any engineers there, won't carry none.
No.
You know, that's up to the contractor.
The means and methods are the responsibility of the contractor, yes.
On a lump sum contract like that?
Yes.
So, you know what that means, I just...
I was just looking at the local companies and how close they were and...
And I, I did put that in the, I thought I put that in the, uh, narrative, I forget what it was, so...
Well, they were far apart on price too.
Yeah. Yeah, it was like twenty thousand dollar difference, wasn't it?
Uh, close, maybe fifteen, I think.
They're normally li, written into the resolution, Julie, is there's a resolution, not there?
I did, I did, I didn't, I...
Okay.
I, I didn't, I didn't put it in the narrative, I'm sorry. There was quite a few.
Yeah, what I would, what I would say for Friday, though, if you can come armed with that just in case, that would be great.
Yeah. Yeah, I know I attached it, I just didn't maybe not put it in the body.
It usually says other bids received.
Yeah.
And it just wasn't there for this.
Yeah.
But it was, uh, spoken, um...
Groover.
Groover, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, um, other business before we get to ARPA, uh, parking status, where we are with, with, uh, Mr. Valeski, I think it was the only bidder. And did we, did he come up with, do we have a copy of what that is or what he bid? Is that public? Is that something we can talk about?
Um, I, I, I gave a call with you.
I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, Commissioner, I don't know.
You wanna pull it up on your phone, or do the same, and is it, we don't wanna drag this on any further?
Do you want a hard copy to get at it?
This is, uh...
I have to take my glasses off to see my phone.
If you get a date and a time on there, let me know when you find it.
So, essentially, it's sixty months for fifteen hundred a month?
What, what date are you looking at? What's the date?
I'm, uh, sorry. It's just coming up as a PDF, hold on. June seventeenth.
I see it.
So, the, they would be responsible for the electricity, for security lighting, water runoff and sewage. We would be responsible for all the necessary insurance, we would... Of course, uh, is Alex in here? Alex, did you see that yet?
I did not.
The parking lease proposal from Mr. Valeski?
I'm sorry, I did not, it's been mine fourteen, I wouldn't do anything until we run it by person.
I, I was sure right now.
Okay, we'll be responsible for electricity, water runoff and property tax.
Can we go get it?
I can go get it.
I'll get it.
No, no, the leaser will be responsible for electricity, water runoff.
Right.
And property tax. We'll be responsible for insurance, liability.
Right.
And maintenance. We can figure the lot however we want, we have the right to figure all that out. And then, the lease terms, sixty months, fifteen hundred a month, there's thirty spots, so you're looking at, um, fifty dollars a spot.
Yeah.
Um, if we did it, one of the things I thought of the other day, and there was a concern, because of the odd irregular shifts, it was brought to my attention, they said, the COs are gonna take all those spots and it's not gonna be available for the public.
Yeah.
So, what I would propose is that along the building, we, we marked off certain spots that are public parking only. Uh, we maybe move some of the handicap spots from the Harmon side of the road, eliminate some of the ones that we have along the road, move them up a little bit closer. And then, the rest of them, maybe we can figure through there.
Who would police that?
The City of Warren.
I mean, I have to be honest, just like we do with the, with the ones we have now, if someone parks in your spot, my spot, you know, handicap spot.
Yeah, but that's his lot, it's a private lot.
Yeah, well, we'll be the, we'll be leasing it, so it'll be actually, we should be able to enforce it.
No, but the City of Warren wouldn't enforce it, no.
It would not be City of Warren.
No, it's a private lot.
I thought you were talking, I thought you were talking about the signs on Harmon.
No, no, not on Harmon, not on Harmon.
You okay?
Write that into your lease agreement.
Yeah, you'd, you'd have to, that, uh, you know, which we'd have to include in there. Who, and who would be the one policing it? We don't have that manpower to do that.
Just a question, Bill Maintenance, um, you know, please, please open it, because he wants us to maintain it in the wintertime. And something freezes up, somebody slips and falls, are they gonna come look at Trumbull County? I'm sure they're gonna look at it.
Yeah, they'd look it up.
Put that into the lease agreement too.
Yeah, we'll pull back on it, so, that's why we have to run it by person, make sure that's even, obviously, something that we wanna keep on.
Right, not to mention the price of it.
The, the price is, quite honestly, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor, really close to what he actually paid for the whole thing.
Yes, yeah.
The building.
I would think there should be a little wiggle room to make that a little less, if we do the whole lease, if we take the whole thing and we do a five-year or something like that, lump sum type of thing, what he's asking.
And as far as, I mean, restricting parking over there, uh, uh, it would be tough. And, and I think there's enough spots there that, at the end of the day, we're increasing our parking exponentially by having that. So, if some, the sheriff's office does take some of those spots...
But I, but I would like to leave that for the public, if I can.
Oh, I would too, I would too, but employees might park there.
Well, I understand that, and that's something where, where maybe, there's thirty spots, say, for example. Maybe we take ten of them, and they can be employee, and I, I came up with the recommendation of leave, leave ten handicap, ten public, and then ten employee.
Yeah.
And on the employee ones, maybe we can number one to ten, and come up with a system where, I don't know what you think about this, but every month, we, we sell those spots for fifty dollars a month or whatever it is, if you wanna park there. But then, we, as the Board of Commissioners, take that five hundred a month, and we donate it to a different charity. So, we pay, we pay for the, the service, but if an employee wants to park there, we'll go one through ten, they can apply, and then their money goes as a donation.
Will that employee pay to park fifty dollars a month?
Yeah, I, well, and...
And, and just not what?
Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor, is just pointing out, he offered those spots to employees for fifty dollars.
And only one person bid, it looks like, there's only one truck that's back there.
Yep.
So, maybe we look at a different amount, but, but if they're gonna do something, I wish we are gonna charge an employee. I'd like to see the money go to a charity.
Well...
Thirty. We can read and figure it, but ballpark is thirty.
Ray, do you want me to send that thing to? I was, I was, I didn't want to.
But Commissioners, I, I was gonna see if I could bring up Google Earth, but you have a picture, I think, if you got the copies.
What?
Um, where he's projecting, and I don't know if he's cutting all those spots for the chain, green chain... Um, where he's projecting, and I don't know if he's counting all those spots where the chain, green chain is by Commissioner Kenham Lacy's spot. If you need access coming from that lot, our lot, into that rental lot, those poles will have to come up.
Yeah.
Those poles come up, you lose those four spaces around you. So where you make back those four, if you're counting twenty six and two, then you have to go down along the building further where the green or the red fencing would be, that he took some off. And now you're in, I don't know what he was using as a cutoff.
He thought he slipped.
And I'm saying, so that's just, um, something to think about as well. And I'm, like I said, I'm, whatever you decide, but. And this would give you a better, you know, a better view of what we're discussing.
Oh, yeah. Do you just want?
So here are the green, here are the green chains, sorry.
All right, go ahead.
There's three, you're gonna lose one, two, three spots. Maybe, there's none here, but he's got this blocked. And then you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, one, two, three, four. Just another area. So if he's parking twenty six and two, you're gonna cringe down this further, which gets him more into his space over there. I think he's more concentrating in this general area.
Does he, does he outline in the RFP what the, what the parcels are?
Yeah, yeah, they're in there.
So.
And it's basically these two pieces right here.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. So it wouldn't be in there.
Yeah, nothing, nothing down there.
Right, all right. If he's outlining, yeah, if he's outlining, it can't go over there. If he's outlining in that proposal, the two parcels, then he's not, he, he can't be talking about anything else.
Correct.
But that little area.
Yeah, so we get none of that off to the right.
And so he's saying using both gates. Look, here's a gate and this is a swing gate up there. So the swing gate would have to stay open, but this would have to be locked open or it's just internal out. But then you have knee dress here and here, and if you open this up here, entrance here. So you're gonna lose spaces if you have to open that up.
What if you took that off?
But that's what I'm saying, you have to pull the chain, the poles out of here.
Yeah, I don't think, I think we wanna keep those, but I'm thinking of putting a gate down the right side so people don't go off into his lot. And they can only enter and, and exit off of Harmon. We have something down there to prevent people from going to the right.
So you're having.
If they come in off of.
That's what I'm saying.
So if you're coming straight down, you have one, two, three.
Right.
And eleven.
But, but we'd have a, a few more there, cause we wouldn't be able to cut through.
Well, then you have to worry about these people back out. You have to look at the general space. Then you just have this road here and there, and then you're everywhere.
So the bottom line is there's not gonna be thirty spaces.
You can't park one here, cause somebody's gotta get out.
Yeah.
Or in. You can't park one here or here, gotta get out.
Might be a good idea.
Oh, he does say twenty six.
He's always definitely.
So that's what, that's what he's accounting for, right.
But you still have to lose one to get out, cause if the car parks here and here, that may get in the trunk.
So you're saying twenty five?
I'm saying less.
Twenty four.
You pull these up.
So we're looking at, if, if you're saying twenty four, we're looking at sixty to fifty a month for each thing.
And I've just shown you his, his picture here of what he's looking at.
Saying New York City.
I, and again, you could put handicap all you want up to a point. And then we could put the signs on our building, now you're gonna come, come, propose into his parking lot, which can, that would be a responsibility to make and fix. Well, of course, yeah, right.
I'd like, and, I mean, enforcement's gonna be a problem, but I like to see most, the majority of it be, you know, like one hour parking or whatever anyway, to, so customers can come, use it and leave. You know, that's what I'm more concerned about is.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is the customer base of being able to utilize it to make this building more user friendly for someone to come downtown. You know, people walking from the way back lot up to the front is, is a concern.
I think that's a concern and I think the price is a concern.
Yes. But it is twenty six more spots than we have now.
Yeah, I know.
And, uh, there's twenty six spots, when you look at the parking we have out front, stuff like that, those are kinda crucial spots for the public. Cause we are seeing a lot of public parking well beyond where we park. And that's, that's not a user friendly pro, you know, program there.
I mean, I, I think that we really need to look at it.
Yeah.
I really think we need to look at it, who would agree, um, again, I mean, HR departments, all they can say is, we need to know how much courts is gonna say, okay, well, maybe then we're gonna increase. If that's gonna increase our premium by a amount, is it really worth it? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there, we haven't gotten, this is the first time seeing this, but we need to look at everything.
Yeah, we, let's get, let's get that information first.
With all our amount of resources, yeah. And then if we really do go through with it, at that point, something that I would suggest is maybe making some of those spots, the handicap spots, and then bringing up the handicap spots that are back in the back parking lot.
Right.
For regular employees. So that way, at least we're dedicating it to people who are truly handicapped, need closer accessibility.
I agree.
Um, I think that's probably more so what I would suggest.
Well, and then something we'll need to address too with that is, we do have on Harmon, some of the best parking.
Right, so the sheriff's department, yeah.
Sheriff's Department, can't the Sheriff's Department come in and enter on the jail si- or on the jail side or in the back?
I think these are all things, that's, that was gonna be my next suggestion.
I know it's convenient for them, but I've already had conversations with the sheriff quite a few times about the vehicles sitting out there.
Yeah.
Running while people are inside and.
I think we owe it to everybody to have all of these conversations before we just say, like, so what I'm saying is, we should meet with the sheriff, once again, you know, now that we're looking at this. Let's talk, of course, I would meet with the sheriff, is, is there other ways that we can, you know, make sure that if we do secure this lot, that we're getting the best thing for above A. And that we're using it for what it's supposed to be. So we can transition some of those shares back behind, if that's possible, I don't know. I know for a fact, the reason many keep their car running is because if there is an emergency, they have to be able to quickly get in and out, and I understand that. But there is an ex, there is an en, an access and entry off the backside of their backside too. So they could get right out onto, you know, if they park it behind, they could really go out that gate and get right out onto North Park. So just things to talk about, but.
I agree, and, and I think that maybe some sort of.
Either way.
He's just throwing out a number here, I want some sort of comparative market analysis of parking, of parking, you know what I mean?
I agree.
Around the area and around the area. What would, what is it going for? Or, you know, what would be?
Like a daily value.
Uh, we're, we're not, we're not comparing this to anything, so.
Right.
We're just saying, okay, this is.
I mean, there's, there's gotta be some comps behind it, best wishes for the people living in the apartments there.
Yeah, they're absolutely.
Yeah.
Where are they paying a month? You know, what do?
Exactly, and look at what they're paying.
There aren't a ton of them, but.
But they're staying there, you know.
I understand.
You're talking about the houses up here, I'm sorry, go hard, that's what I mean, they usually park in our lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They park out here in the wintertime, in our lot, and they walk across the streets, or boats, they park, they don't like parking in the back.
Everybody, everybody.
That's true, they do that way.
They use our lot. Trust me, we park around them.
And again, I think it's just all, there's HR components too, so I'm, I'm, I'm very glad, thank you, cause, you know, we have employees all, I mean, we have workmen conflict, I had six this year. My employees just selling in our own parking lot, let alone parking lots that we're leasing and servicing and being held accountable. Just things to think about, I mean.
And I think we could look in and around the downtown area at any parking lots and what they're charging, we can find that information and make sure that we're not, you know, overpaying for these twenty four spots.
Making sure it's the best informed decision.
Yeah.
I think hindsight is twenty three, our best thing would have been to have bought it back then and been done with it.
Yeah.
It is what it is, right?
Yes, no, it is what it is.
Yeah, and we'll move forward and figure it out, so.
Twenty years ago, I proposed a parking deck in the back lot.
Parking deck would be.
That was like twenty years ago.
Right now, we'll be talking about how do we maintain your damn parking deck if it's built back there.
Well, you only pile the top, you only pile the top.
Yeah. Well, but to the foundation, I mean, after so many years, that's, yeah.
Well, we just don't wanna keep kicking the can down the road, cause we owe it to Mr. Valeski also to make a decision, so he can move on with his life on what he's gonna do with something he's paying taxes on right now. I'm sure this deal has an expiration date somewhere, but we gotta have some middle ground negotiation room wise. Mar, why don't you, Alex, you looking to Corso? Mar, you looking to compare comps around Warren?
We'll do that.
I'll call Mr. Valeski and start to initiate, initiate the conversation as far as the wiggle room on the price.
That'll be good.
That'll be good.
And then Bill, you, um, work on configuration a little bit back there too, and what we can get out of it.
Yeah.
And then we'll address this again at the next workshop, um, on what progress we made on that. But I do think we need something for the public first and foremost, and that's gonna be our main concern with this. And whether we reconfigure Harmon, reconfigure that, um, is there a way we can put this thing in the, so that RAP enforces that lot also? Can we do a contract with them as the city of Warren did for parking? Can we contract with them to enforce parking in our parking lot or not? I mean, that's something we, we can look at. If Warren could do it, you know, we surely probably could.
Julie Green, just a thought regarding the sheriff's equals. I understand that the reason why they keep them running is because their internal computer.
System, yeah.
Requires a while to warm up. So, but I'm just thinking, like, even if it's right adjacent, a little ways down the road, to have, uh, even.
Yeah.
Some diagonal parking spaces on that street, I don't know if the city of Warren would be amenable to that and have them backed in. I think that would be the fastest way for them to get out.
Well, just they have their own lot behind them.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure that's probably a lot of their administration people park back there, I don't know who parks all back there, but.
People, yeah.
What is it?
The staff.
Their vans are back there.
Right, but their employees, we own the building.
Yes.
You know, their employees are getting preferential parking, like behind the building where they can walk in and out. Whereas you're walking from way back there, you're walking from way back there, you're walking from all the way in the back. You know, if we can maximize that with emergency vehicle use back in that area, that opens up all Harmon, another six slots right there north of the, the handicap spots that the public can use. And make them, you know, twenty minute parking, half hour parking, whatever.
I think, I just think we.
Think the gate probably is too slow.
Go hard, Tom McCann made it.
We'll get rid of the gate, I mean, there's no doubt about that.
Um.
You don't think?
It, I don't believe they can.
They, they have to have a gate, cause it, it, it doesn't, it's straight jail access, like, once you get through that, yeah, I mean, you're in the jail.
Sure.
So they absolutely have to have that gate, plus that's how they do a lot of their transport. Um, so there's a lot that you're leaving around the gate. The gate is slow, I'm not gonna say their mine is painfully slow, but that would be something that we need to look at. I mean, it's just all things we just look at.
Part of our, some guy made it, the detectives park in the back, in the back secured lot area. Um, staff, kitchen slash, you know, uh, store in who parks in our lot by the dumpsters, who work at the stone building. Um, the, the road deputies that are on the road are just here for reporting, and I'm not the expert, and I can't, I can just tell you what I see when I get here in the morning. They're doing their briefing, the muster room, so they know their, their duties for the day, they're in and out, so that's something we may have to ask the sheriff about.
They go in and out.
Didn't they used to report the Panther?
Used to when they had a.
When they had a garage there.
They had their own building there, that's where the sheriff's department used to be.
Yeah. That's where it used to be, um, and that got torn down, so that's not, no longer exists. Yeah. And it wasn't as mu- as much of an issue then, to your point, because, you know, we had huge, you know, vehicle, we had huge open space, you know, I think.
And the jail was here.
Well, every spot counts, especially when winter comes and.
Curious to know what, what, uh, people pay to park in the deck out there.
Over by Burger King, yeah, I don't know who owns that.
By, uh, yeah. I don't either.
City.
The city.
City owns it.
The city.
City owns it, isn't that city?
Yeah, city owns it. I can't remember, I had, when we were looking at the research of this, I had to ask somebody I care.
Wonder how much those spots cost. We'll, we'll look into it, we'll look into it.
Yeah, contact the city.
That's another terrible spot.
We're gonna make sure we keep that first spot for award winning media, Tribune Chronicle writer.
(laughing).
Closest.
Would you, you go to the Emmy, where this, did you guys get nominated for an Emmy?
I think that's.
The regional Emmy.
I think that's TV, I think that's.
Oh, it's TV, it's not print, okay.
They do have print awards.
Cause I saw it from FMJ where.
They have print awards for that.
I didn't know that, okay.
Somebody with Purple Heart.
Purple Heart recipient, yeah, there are things. We want, you want something to be utilized though.
Sure.
You know, and I like the idea of, if twenty minute, half hour parking, you know, for people that are going in, getting titles. Most of business people come in here, they're not here all day.
Yeah.
They come and they go. But we need to enforce it, we need to, we need to work with RAP to make sure it is enforced, to keep these spots fluid, so you don't have someone just leaving a car here all day long and then coming up to a commissioner's meeting, you know. Did I say that alone?
Yes.
Anyway.
I mean, for a small increase, I'd be willing to put on, like, a ton, like, I mean, if you want to pay me, I'll be out there, I'll enforce trust, I'll be there.
In the winter?
You know what?
Yeah, yeah, man, I mean, I.
Wait, but you with the hut, with the heat and the heat, you're next.
I think we found.
Like, I'm, I'm, yes, I do.
If you have it on the street, we said.
Mike Salamoni is transportation, we can put one of them little cubicle, gay attendant thing there and move his office there and it'll free up room and di- in, uh, the stone building.
There you go.
I mean, you could work out something with the city if they're already doing Harmon.
But they don't take care of it.
Yeah, they do.
They never enforce those, they never enforce the handicap parking.
I always do. I see it.
No, they're, they're supposed to on this.
I don't, yeah, I don't, they don't do it.
I see the guy, in fact, I've got multiple tickets to prove it.
Well, yeah.
But I paid for it.
And then some people never get tickets, sure.
I've got bunches.
Um, huh, yeah, I think, um, Hutter Street, yeah, I get one if I park on Hutter.
It's just here.
Yeah. But it was worth it to me to pay the ticket and have to walk down.
And nasty weather sometimes is worth it then, I mean, people will take chances, that's why we gotta keep these spots fluid and get in, get out, do your county business, have a smile on your face and go. You know, we, we need to work, strive towards that, because we do have people that are dreading coming downtown. And it's a bad experience when they come down, they gotta walk and then they forget something and they gotta go back to their car.
Yeah.
So, we need to.
Have we heard any more on the other, the Y parking or no?
They're, they're gonna start that process for their building here, so.
Oh, okay.
They were delayed for some reason, I read this out to Mr. Thompson, they're delayed, but they're gonna start up here shortly, so I don't know when that house is gonna get torn down. And then, or we kinda like park for a minute, people in the block, we don't even own that lot, but, and they walk right across the street, so.
I think Mr. Thompson owns that, we need to get a negotiation somehow, see if he's apt to sell that chunk of property right there where it's just a dirt gravel lot.
I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna incorporate that with their building when they put it there.
Well, that's what we gotta look to see, maybe we can do that beforehand.
Put it in my marriage, there. No, Biggie, it was on the attachment, yeah.
Okay. Martha Yoder, ARPA.
Martha Yoder, Turnbull County Auditor, uh, first of all, we start with eligible, ineligible, another update. Um, eligible, uh, Vernon Township, as you know, is eligible with the conditions specified in, in the email from Attorney Rogers a few weeks ago. The status on this, the waiver for the prosecutor was done, um, last week or two weeks ago. The prosecutor's office is reviewing the resolution that Attorney Rogers proposed. The Attorney Rogers also has a waiver for their comp, or their, um, firm, and it's on the agenda this week. Um, on your sheet, by the way, all the eligible are in green. Um, Warren Township, the sixty seven, four fifty for their playground equipment. Newton Falls Joint Fire District, twenty five thousand, twenty six dollars for wildfire fire, fire unit, uh, wildlife fire unit. The Optimist Club in Bizetta Courtland, thirty thousand dollars to improve the ball fields and congestion stands. And East Gate, the fifty thousand dollar broad, broadband coordinator. Do you want me to go ahead and proceed with getting resolutions and agreements for those four grants?
Absolutely, yes.
So ineligible, Gus Davis, uh, thirty one, six thirty eight and thirteen, um, nine thirty for generators. Gus Davis has been awarded one thirty five, nine ninety nine. Do you want me to freeze the funds for the generators and ask them to come up with another request?
They're one thirty five?
Yes.
Yes. But tell them the clock is ticking on something like that, say.
Commissioner Hantlamesa?
Yes, yes.
If they have something.
All right.
Um, I know they had a road project, very similar to Vernon, actually was the very first one.
Yes, but that was like a four hundred thousand dollar project.
Yeah.
So, just saying. Um, Kinsman, thirty thousand, uh, three thirty eight, sixty four for generators. Kinsman has been awarded one fifty nine, four sixty nine, and has forty one sixty five, seventy nine frozen from the signed denial. Do you want me to freeze the thirty thousand dollar?
Yes, do they still be under the two hundred now?
Right, I will communicate those to them. Uh, Bristol Ambulance for one seventy five, in spite of receiving more information, funds are currently frozen. What do you want me to do with that?
It doesn't qualify, right?
Right.
That's what it comes down to.
Basically, yes, and I mean, she's, she's provided more information, you have, you have the, the email from her on this, it wasn't a formal opinion letter, it was just an email, I can't, I don't have the data.
I don't know how we go against what our attorney's telling us.
I, I, we can't go against our attorney, but in the same sense, I, I, I think, I, I'd like you to, Bristol Township meeting, I mean, within my. I'd like you to, Bristol Township meeting, I mean, without myself, and help them. But they've got three denied, I think it is.
At least two, I know that.
A, and we.
They've had, they've had, the ambulance has been denied twice.
Right, but then they had the initial, their initial ask was for a building, uh.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
A capital project.
Yep.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, I, they keep getting bam bam bam. It, uh, uh, we need to reach and work with them on this next one to make sure they don't get denied again with that.
Well, I'm going to just say, I, you know, I've given them all of the suggestions.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying don't do this, but I, they've been given all of the suggestions that Attorney Rogers has made. And it's, it, there's a stubbornness about this that they are insisting that this is what they need.
This is the last ditch effort, just let them know that.
And, and they got, but I still do, I agree too. I, I'm against Attorney Rogers' decision on this, but she's, who we pay to do this is reckless legal, but I, I personally have to side with them that I, I think it's all a matter of semantics and Bristol is like the anchor up there when it comes to emergency services. These other ones, they back everybody up, they're, they are the last line of defense north when something really bad happens.
She knows all of that.
I understand that.
She's been given that.
Gee, I get that.
So, um, so you're going to follow up. I'm not going to then.
Yeah, I will follow up with Bristol and, um, work with them on whatever I can do and offer my assistance, but.
Another project or something.
Yes.
See if we can come up with another project, I.
And I wanna just remind you, and I, I think you guys are both on the same page, you understand the importance of following her, um, opinion. Um, but the other part of that is we, when we have an opinion, that increases our liability as well. So, if, if you guys were to say, okay, we're just gonna go ahead and we're not, we're gonna throw it out.
That's exactly what I want.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that you guys understand.
I agree. I mean, I, like I said, I'm not gonna go against her, but I do support them and I think she's wrong in this, but.
Right. Um, still pending, Kyler Foundation, which is the Colbert Lake Dam Study, Veterans Outreach, Gerard Community Senior, Community Committee, the senior services at Gerard Multi-Generational, and the USS Oklahoma R.I.P. She has been working with these applicants, I'm seeing some con- conversations going back and forth, and she anticipates having some decisions on this. We have twelve left, left on the yes list, so would you like me to support or to submit the next five or six to her?
Yeah, do the next six.
Yeah.
Six.
Whi- which are?
I, I will, those are.
Just so we know.
Family and Community Services, the Scope Centers, that's eighteen thousand for external diff- diffibrillators. East Gate Wireless Broadband Deployment, one point five million. Baller Township, thirty thousand, uh, for Colbert Work. Howland Township is the, uh, Bull- Bullendale Food Cantry Improvement. Hubbard City, three hundred thousand dollars for generator for the wastewater plant. Fifteen thousand for Hubbard City for equipment for critical incident response by police. All right, I will do that. Just letting you know, per the last workshop, I did communicate with Farmington Trustee Davis about their denied road project and advice to work with the engineer. I did adjust the frozen amount that they have to reflect a hundred thousand rather than forty four thousand. I also spoke with trustee Pavlik from Mesopotamia about utilizing their frozen funds for road project and also advised, advised him to contact the engineer. Commissioner Malloy was going to speak to Bizetta. Do I need to feed, uh, freeze a hundred thousand dollars for them to pursue something with the engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Ovis has already initiated a phone call, so. He said if we come up with a hundred thousand, they could still do the project with their own funds.
Um, you were given, um, in this, the updated allocated and promised.
One, one question I have for Martha.
Which, which project in Bizetta though was it?
Uh, the Clarity to Cozy Road.
Remember, they had a road project that was denied for three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We said two hundred thousand, they had given a, um, you know, they had been given a grant for their ambulance for two hundred thousand. So, what you guys came up with at the last workshop was that Commissioner Malloy would reach out to the trustees.
Mm-hmm.
And see if they would want, wanna do the road project and o- and only get a hundred thousand. Yes.
Like, the next six after, um, these six that we implement.
Yes.
Form involve ambulances again.
Correct.
So, I would just advise the people that are listening or whatever, um, you know, be prepared to have the backup data because, you know, Howland, Hubbard, I'm sorry, Howland, Southington, uh, Eagle Joint Fire District and Bloomfield, you know, they're gonna be in the same boat, she's gonna want the data, she wanna see if they have increased calls or not. You know, I don't think Bristol's the only anomaly, you know, in the whole county that they're the only ones that made it through COVID unscathed. Um, so, we should prepare there that there may some more, be some more denials in those asks or potentially. And if they're all approved and Bristol's the only one that's denied, I'll be even more upset with their decision.
Okay, um, you were given the updated allocated and promised sheet as well as the yes sheet. On the updated allocated and promised, just wanna let you know, that is completely up to date as far as the, um, what we've had expended and what we have, um, uh, encumbered right now. What we, of, of all of those projects, some of them have, we don't have POs on yet, we're still working on that, uh, but we're at about, of what's been expended plus what is encumbered right now, we're at a little over, well, almost twenty four point five million. Um, so I just wanna let you know that, um, because that is important. We do have to get that, those things encumbered, uh, by the end of the year. Um, on the bottom line spreadsheet, just to let you know, because you did just ask me to freeze a bunch, that's going to change that bottom line, uh, by those amounts. So, you asked me to freeze a hundred thousand for Bizetta, that's not currently frozen. You asked me to freeze another, um, uh, about forty, a little over, uh, almost forty, I guess forty five thousand for Gus Davis. And also, you asked me to, uh, freeze thirty thousand for Kinsman. So, we're talking about, um, almost two hundred thousand less on that bottom line. Just wanna let you know that.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Sorry to, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, you're good. We just had a workshop, we're closing up here.
Sorry to interrupt.
You better watch, tomorrow I might outbid you on those.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not afraid to bet against them.
We got, uh, four projects to add this year too, so.
Fantastic.
So, we doing, doing more and more every year.
Good. Awesome. That's right.
Can't do the same one I did last time, you got some more. All right, good, have a good day.
See you, thank you. And that was, uh, the, just to announce also, the Turnbull County Fair Livestock Auction and Cheese Basket Auction. The livestock is Saturday, July thirteenth at ten thirty. The cheese baskets are Sunday, July fourteenth at two. I believe you bought cheese last year.
I did, yeah.
I bought a hog, I bought a fifty pound turkey that's still in my freezer and I bought a couple of the biggest dogs, or.
Is it twenty pounds?
Fifty pounds?
Fifty pounds, yeah, I'm sorry, I gotta figure it, I gotta cook it.
All right.
You get the Jeff Crystal or somebody to.
Yeah.
With a big enough oven.
It's like an oven.
You can split those in two.
I should've when I got it and I said, I'll do it whole.
You can still have somebody do that for you.
I pictured like the big Charlie Brown Thanksgiving, everybody there and a big huge turkey, you know, but, you know, but it didn't happen that way, but I gotta do something with it soon.
That's enormous.
That is huge.
It is.
I've never guessed anything from that.
Um, yeah, okay. Okay, so that's gonna change things a little bit, so we're gonna be down more than eight hundred thousand range.
Right, yep.
With a couple of these pending too. You know, the.
Right.
Kyler Foundation, there still needs to be some research from what I understand and that's not set yet on everything going on there. I mean, for us to be able to allocate funds toward that yet, even if she approves it, I'm not sold on that thing all the way yet till we, the feet should come together.
Haven't they, haven't they gotten an extension on that now?
But, but the owners, we still don't have any agreement, we need something, MOA, we need something signed before I would allocate a dollar.
Oh, yeah.
To make sure that this is gonna be in public use. Once it's done, they're gonna donate it, sell it to this group, whatever. I know there's some other groups who've got involved, like the, uh, Trinity Foundation stuff offered their support and their help to actually acquire ownership of the property, um, but I don't know where any of that stands. We're gonna need a briefing on that soon. And then, you know, one of the other ones, I understand she's still waiting on information, it's crucial for her allowing it to pass, so. Thank you, Martha. I know this is, uh, way more than what you were expecting to have to deal with on this stuff, but.
I had to be the ARPA elf yesterday and come in for two hours.
I understand. And I, and we appreciate it, this is, we're not talking chump change here, we're talking, leaving a longstanding mark on the county with this money. And we're not spending it like drunken sailors, so we're, we're, no offense to the sailors, but we are, uh, trying to make the biggest bang for the buck.
I have a question, Julie Green.
Yes.
Because I've been doing grants so long, I'm not volunteering to do this.
(laughing).
Let me preface my statement, but, but I, just like an observation, they may already have this, but you, if not, could you and Commissioner Cantal Mesa waive privilege to allow these communities that are having, struggling with these particular types of grants that they're trying to get, see what the successful ones look like?
That's what I've been doing.
I've, I've.
I've already been doing that.
I said, I figured they have.
When, when people have that, people have reached out and I've done that, and we also did that actually for Bristol.
Okay.
I did that for Bristol without them asking for it from me.
Yeah.
Because Commissioner Malloy had talked to them and he suggested it.
Yeah.
And I, they never came to me and asked me, I just went ahead and sent it. Whenever somebody's asked me, because those aren't privileged, those are public record. The actual applica- the, the opinion letters are privileged and they, they are the only ones that can waive that. But the, 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 the requests themselves are public record and I've.
Right.
Given them, when they've been requested and for some people, you know, I've just given them, like I said, for that. So, they, they've been, quite frankly, um.
Do you think the pro- the letters, the response letters would be helpful to have as well?
The opinions? I.
Because.
I will be honest with you, so especially in this one.
Mm-hmm.
With Attorney Rogers' approval, she saw what I gave, sent.
Mm-hmm.
I summarized what the reasons were. They were given lots of information and I've done that. I am not, I just know what she has recommended, that she has recommended that they not waive privilege. I don't know, I don't know that it would be more helpful because every time someone has questioned why, I've been without.
Yeah.
Without, you know.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Without violating privilege.
I get it.
I have given them as much information as I possibly.
Right, right. Now, I get it. I, I was, I wasn't aware that she was against that, so that, that clears things up.
That she's advised all of them, not to waive privilege.
Okay.
They can still do that, but her concern too is that, um, that's gonna start a wave of that and so it'll be like a constant thing.
Yeah, right.
And, and we've tried, I've tried very hard to make sure that, like, when I understand, like, a reason why. So.
Right.
With this particular one, it was the call volume. And then, and I actually went back and looked at what they had sent her and, and so I could see for myself, I questioned, is there more information that you can give? And instead of more information, it's, no, everybody else got this. So, it's, I mean, there's a little bit more in there, but there's not a lot of substance to what's been given back.
Okay.
And it's not, you know, she's done, she, she reaches out to people and asks questions.
I know, I know she does.
On that particular one, there was a lot of communication back and forth.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, the reason I asked is early on, I did work with her and she is great.
She is, she's very good.
She'll tell you exactly what she needs and if, you know, you're able to provide that data, you know, she, it goes pretty smoothly. But if the data doesn't reflect.
Right.
The call volume increase that's required, then there's really nothing you can do about that.
Right.
Um, I've got a quick question. I, I haven't seen the back and forth review you have, but Veterans Outreach with the windows, with the app that they had for the new windows for their facility, I just don't know how that doesn't qualify because with air and, and, you know, mitigation of, of bad air and all that, windows wouldn't qualify.
I am not sure. I do know that, I haven't seen all of the communication either, I'll be honest with you. Sometimes I get, sometimes Attorney Rogers CCs me and sometimes she doesn't. Or she may CC me and ask the question and the response is not CC back to me. So, I don't get all of the, all of it. I do know that she's been talking to her and trying to really, really work with her to make sure that they figure out.
I would, I would think that clean air and mitigating the, you know, that's part of it and what new windows would be, would qualify.
The other, the other issue that she's really trying, especially with the nonprofits, because the nonprofits are eligible for revenue loss where the townships have already gotten their revenue loss money, right?
Right, right.
But the, the nonprofits don't have it. So, even for like the Howland one, for instance, even though the actual project itself wasn't eligible, she looked very carefully at their revenue loss and came up with a figure to She looked very carefully at their revenue loss and came up with a figure to give them some money.
Is that supposed to cap to ten million?
Yeah.
Uh, but our revenue loss is, is capped at ten million.
That's what I'm saying.
Right? And, but when we award to a subaward, that's not counting there.
Oh.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't go into that category, right?
Okay.
And I'll, I'll verify that with her, but that's the way I've understood. We've only given a little bit of that, honestly, these nonprofit ones are small. So the thing though, that she did point out to me is that any of these road projects where we're working with the engineer, that does become our revenue loss.
Oh, see, that, that's a whole different whole lot.
Now, it's so far, we're not, we're at revenue loss. By my calculation, and I need to probably go back and make sure, because, you know, I inherited the spreadsheet, right? But we're at about seven million, so we have about a little bit less than three million in that. So any of these road projects can't exceed that. I don't, I don't feel like it.
I don't think we could.
I don't feel like we're in danger of that.
We're not gonna exceed that.
Right. But, but that, they do apply to our, because what happens is.
That would be money that we could use to our own facilities or.
Right, but you guys have already said it, you know, that.
Even with revenue loss dollars?
Well, we. If they don't, if they, our facilities, we can also do capital projects.
Right.
So it's, we don't have, remember, we don't have to spend ten million in revenue loss.
Yeah.
We can spend up to ten million in revenue loss, right? So, um, most of the projects that we have said that we wanted to do, that's, everything that we've said we wanted to do, that's revenue loss included in that table that I just gave you.
Even all the sanitary sewer projects?
All of that. Those are, those are not revenue loss though.
Okay.
Those are a different category.
Okay.
And all, those water and sewer, that's different.
Throw that up because I thought they were revenue loss.
No.
Cause they're counting.
Not what, that's not what I was, that's not what I inherited. I will look at that and make sure I have.
Please, if you.
I'll, I'll make sure that we have that. But, but we, um, they fit in a different category. And really, what you wanna use that revenue loss category for is things that won't fit, right? Which is the road projects, right? They don't fit in any other way.
Well, w- we also have, you know, a lot of other lasting, permanent projects like, um, what Warren is trying to do and, and, and their, um, you know, revitalization efforts. Uh, that, that's something that, uh, you know, the, the, the group there, and the name escapes me right now, Fund for Warren's Future, I'm sorry. Is, is, uh, is trying to do with, um, you know, modernize housing and, and, um, create a, a, a more, um, recreational friendly downtown. Uh, the, you know, when you have a, a, a private investor like they do, central private investor that's highlighting what needs to be done in the area, you do need a level of public commitment. And Warren has publicly committed upwards of two million dollars right now. And I know that they're asking for us for, for dollars too. And you could say, well, that's the city of Warren, they should, well, a strong county seat, in my opinion. Strong county seat and a strong, um, vibrant Warren benefits the rest of the county. Uh, and really, we go as our strongest county seat goes. So if we can invest back into that, that helps Bristol, that helps Champion, that helps all these surrounding areas. My opinion. Um, so that's something that we need to.
Julie Green, that's proven in planning.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and these are lasting.
Yeah, your central city is, has to be successful. It, it directly impacts the rest of the county, for sure.
It does. It does. And, and the rest of the county will see success from that.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, that's something that we definitely wanna put on our radar as well. Whether it be through revenue loss or through something else. My two cents.
And the American Planning Association.
Don't forget that. Alex, do you have anything for us, HR-wise?
Uh, no, no, yes, no. I mean, there's training on Wednesday, so the evening may not be worth it then. You still get credit if you spend and watch the video afterwards. However, Florida is really asking for.
When is it?
Uh, Wednesday. Yeah, it's been this bill in here from two.
Two thirty.
Two thirty to four.
Okay, that's good.
Um, again, it helps just, yeah, partnering every year, which is ideal. And, no, we're very busy hiring for everybody in Florida, but. Contract negotiations, there's three going on right now. I have three going on right now. Um, that's where I was this morning, so. Rachel has to bear with HR because.
Are any new ideas posed to you this morning, to anyone?
Yeah, there was. Not, not during contract negotiations, I would talk about that.
Is that on our schedule for Wednesday?
It should be, yes.
Okay.
Wednesday. It's two thirty, two, it's two thirty.
Okay.
Cause I have back to back to back.
Yeah, tid.
It's on my.
Yeah, the tid is at two. I have another meeting before that.
It's on, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so from.
I'm sorry.
I was looking in the wrong spot.
So from, um.
Martha, I will not be there and Mr. George will not be there for the tid.
I saw that. But we, Mr. George is non-voting, so we'll still have a, we'll have a forum.
Yeah, very good. Lisa, everything's coming along good for the fair?
Awesome. Still waiting for answers for.
I sent out.
I, I wanted to let you know that Rachel's mom passed away.
Like an interest.
I don't know.
Rachel made it.
I played on Friday and I asked her.
Her, her calling, I'm.
Bye, bye tomorrow, so I don't have enough interest Friday's in a day tomorrow. I'll, I'll just enroll over.
I can send you the bitchware.
Okay, all right.
You mean from the planning commission or the commission?
It's a card or something, no.
Well, I.
We could also, well, we can't all.
But I also like.
We can sign your name as a card.
I mean, we're, I'm just, she's a wonderful person.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we were planning on.
We're gonna have more space too.
It worked out well.
All right.
So you were saying?
Oh, um, yes, so I haven't had a chance to look into anybody yet, but a department head, I won't say anybody. Requested of me this morning to look into, um, and I, again, I gotta go do. But back in like the nineties, I wanna say, there was a program, uh, where the county decided to, or offered buying out people of their last couple of years of service, uh, so that they could retire, um, and I.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. People say, would you make? I didn't say any names, but I was asked to look into it, so I will look into it.
Looking to what?
She's not getting out that easy.
Yeah, so Melissa, would you please look into it? I said, well, I mean, I may start looking at it.
That's a thing.
But it was in the nineties, we did offer it one time.
What, what is that? We offered what?
Just a buyout at their time.
Buyout. So if you have like, we limited it, I think, in the past, like if you have three years left.
You don't.
Before you retire, we'll buy out retirees that you just retired now.
Yeah, well, I, I order you not to pursue that any further.
(laughing)
I'll look into it any further.
Well, I didn't say to do it before, but.
Oh, that's a second, yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll look into it.
(laughing)
I'll prepare all the data you want.
So, yeah.
How about buying out months of a restaurant?
(laughing) Can you do that?
Being killed, keep her as long as I'm going, okay, okay.
Ooh.
Now you wanna.
Actually, now's the idea.
Now, yeah.
Now you wanna look at it.
Reason is right now.
Always moving the goalpost.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, yeah. Anything else? Not retain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.